Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the order of the City of Desert Hot Springs, regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council is serving as the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for November 19th, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Griffith.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempe.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present. We have a new pastor in town, Matt Dudley, and he is the pastor of the Christian Center, which Pastor Ron Hobbs just retired from. And I'd like to introduce him. I know there's going to be a bigger introduction by Dana in the public comments, but I asked him to do an invocation tonight since he was here and new to town, and the retired Reverend back there kind of said, "Yeah, the new guy's got to do it."
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is an honor to be here. Shall we pray? Father, thank you that we get to gather in this place tonight. Thank you for a wonderful city. And Lord, thank you for the rain outside. We're grateful for that. Lord, we pray that as we gather and discuss the city's business tonight, that you would guide us in justice and righteousness and in truth. We thank you for the leadership of our town, and we pray that you would bless and guide their leadership. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will have Councilmember, let's see, who did I pick last? Let's do, Councilmember Gardner tonight will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report on Closed Session. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, we have no reportable action this evening.
Thank you for that. Tonight, our next item is the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar? I don't hear anybody. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the consent calendar? Yes, sir. Which item? Which item number? Which is item number? So there's items in the consent calendar, 13, 14, 15, 16, or 17.
Item eight.
What number is it? Hold on, timeout.
Item eight on the admin.
Item eight?
On the administrative calendar.
It's on the administrative calendar. You'll need to wait till that item.
Okay.
This is the consent calendar.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else would like to speak on the consent calendars? Items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. See, nobody else coming forth?
Mr. Mayor, quickly, on one of the items, I think I had voted no previously, so I just want to register the same. I don't know how that works when it goes through on consent the second time. We're just voting the consent calendar, right? We're not reaffirming our previous votes.
City Clerk?
The council is voting to approve the items on the consent calendar. So if you would like your vote on a particular item to reflect no, then now's the time to state.
Do you remember which one it was?
No, but it's okay. We'll go ahead. Thanks.
Okay.
Actually, I think it was the, it was the one regarding code. Is that on there, Gerald?
That'd be item 15. Are you talking about the building and constructions?
Yeah, just so have me vote as registers.
Is that your motion to approve all items excluding yourself as a no vote on 15?
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any more comments on the consent calendar? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with item 15, Betts voting no.
We're going to move to public comments at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. So that means if you're here tonight to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, we'd like to make public comment. A blue card would need to be filled out and given to the city clerks. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. Our first speaker tonight is Russ Martin, followed by Mike Bacardi.
Mayor, council staff, my name is Russ Martin. I'm Vice President, Mission Springs Water District. In a continuing effort by Mission Springs Water District to protect our groundwater and the removal of septic tanks, I am pleased to announce the passage of Assessment District 18, which encompasses seven communities in the Desert Hot Springs area and represents 2,400 parcels of land, the majority of which are on septic systems. The passage of AD-18 was by a vote of the property owners who approved the assessment by nearly 60%. The cost to each property owner is approximately half of the total cost, or $8,000, paid over 20 years. The balance of the costs will be covered by Mission Springs Water District through the grant process. Prior to the vote, six public information meetings were held, mailers were sent, door hangers were placed, and telephone calls, telephone contacts were conducted to inform customers of the pending action. When will Mission Springs Water District start the sewer project? Good question. Mission Springs Water District anticipates the first grant award in October 2020, with construction beginning soon thereafter. What neighborhoods will get the sewer system first of the seven that I mentioned? Mission Springs Water District has an engineering department that has a 10-point criteria that will determine which zones or neighborhoods will be, receive the sewer system first. Such factors considered include septic tank failures, geography of the neighborhood, how fast does the water percolate into the area, and possible groundwater contamination. What neighborhoods are in the Assessment District 18? There is a map on the Mission Springs Water District website. You can visit missionspringswaterdistrict.org and follow the link to AD-18 Benefit Area Map. If you have any questions, please call Victoria Lort at the Water District at 329-6448, extension Mission Springs Water District is committed to protecting our most valuable resource, our water, and we appreciate the public support of our efforts to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bacardi, followed by Ron Reed.
Good evening, council staff, chief, and the public. I wanted to clear up two events, projects that the CCAC, of which I am Chair, approved. First, the billboard mural for the water tank will not be happening. After months of work and time, the owner told the city that he did not want it in place. The city must now activate and certify that all of the planting initially planned to cover the water tank at Harborside be completed. The next item concerns an event we, that CCAC spent more months on in time, the city-sponsored Veterans Day event on November 10th. This was voted on by the commission, and it was approved by the commission, by the council, and it was approved by all of the people within the city because all the permits were paid for and pulled according to the rules and regulations of the city. There was a shadow event put on by a council member and a person who does not even live in the city. The use of the Public Works Department happened without the proper permits and/or fees being paid. Oddly, at this second event, a council member and the last Chair of the CCAC were awarded beautiful quilts for supporting the veterans. No veteran was singled out. I believe the shadow event was a slap in the face to the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, the city, and the VFW in particular, to whom we were extending an olive branch for cooperation. I doubt that will be repaired. I was told information that the shadow event that was at best misinformed, misunderstood, or at worst, an outright lie. I value honesty above all. I believe I no longer have the trust in the process being followed according to the city laws and ordinances. Therefore, tonight, November 19th, 2019, I hereby resign from the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission effective immediately, and I thank all of those who have supported us, and I wish all the remaining commissioners well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ron Reed, followed by Ted Meyerhoff.
My name is Ron Reed, and I live in Desert Hot Springs. And it's just a point of information, point of public safety. When the Kmart closed its doors completely, the entire parking lot went dark. If you go by there right now, it is still dark. That affects Walgreens on one side and Starbucks and that row of businesses going up. It is completely dark, and it's very unsafe. And I think that somehow, I don't know how it could be done, but the parking lot needs to be relit, or at least half of it. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Ted Meyerhoff, followed by Brad Anderson.
Mayor Mattis, council, city staff. I'm here tonight to give the public safety report. Chairman Lozano was going to be here, but she had a family emergency, so she called me and asked me to do it. Our last meeting, we discussed, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Davis for bringing the CPR classes, first aid classes, and from what I understand, the CERT classes are also coming, which will be great to train our residents for emergency situations. And, you know, that can really save lives in a bad disaster that may or may never come. Hopefully, they never comes. The other thing that we discussed was the Police Explorers Program at the high school. They seem to have a great number of students who wanted to get into the Police Explorer Program, but only 30 of them were able to get in. So we're having representative from our local high school here come to the next Public Safety Commission and see what we can do to help get more students into that program. We feel that'd be a great thing for the high school and the city to have 100 people, or 100 students, I should say, young adults in the Police Explorer Program. And I know that'll be quite an undertaking with, to get that accomplished with the city and being involved and residents being involved with that and their schools. So we'll have more of that. Commissioner Lozano will be here next meeting to fill you in on that. Our next thing is, we'd like to remind people to use their turn signals in the mirror and the back, on the cars, for a reason. You know, emergency services are coming down the street. You can see them from a mile away, but people seem to be waiting until the last minute to pull over. There's a thing that I learned when I was in high school, it's called defensive driving. You don't know who's next to you in the car. You don't know who's coming down in the car. You never met them before. Why would you trust them? So watch what they're doing and be cautious of what you're doing also. And I practice this at least 90% of the time. I'm not a perfect driver either. Sometimes I forget the turn signal and other things that I should remember. But we all have our daily routines that we do, and sometimes it interferes with making that simple little thing as a turn signal. But let's try to do that more and slow down. That's really the main thing. I was a witness to, when a witness got there right after a trolley accident that was caused by somebody texting, and luckily, nobody got killed, but it was a bad accident. So no texting when you're driving.
Thank you, Ted.
Keep this going. I'd like to invite everybody, I've got four seconds.
You've got four seconds.
I'd like to invite everybody to our Public Safety Commission. Thank you.
Brad Anderson, followed by Teresa Powell.
Thank you, Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Anson Mirage. I didn't think I would make it up here tonight because of the weather, and usually on rainy days, I don't go anywhere, so, but I felt I had to come up here tonight, and I just took the opportunity to talk about public safety, like the other person talked about, and that's mosquitoes, okay? The mosquito vector control district, the administrators, we had them last month, or last meeting, was here settling that abatement warrant thing. But down in the Mecca area, we're still positive for St. Louis septicitis out of the whole state of California, and that's inexcusable, meaning the vector control district is supposed to be a premier district of the state of California, and we still have disease going on, disease transmission. And the weather normally breaks that cycle, so hopefully, the weather, but again, with the abatement warrant proceedings now, we got, I don't know how many pools, but hundreds of pool, swimming pools at the vector district under the warrant, has to be seen within 10 days, and we know that's not feasible or possible. So if you have a swimming pool or anything around your property, I would urge you to dump it out, and it's to curb this mosquito spike that we're having this year and probably next year. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teresa Powell, followed by Alexis Brody.
How are you? I'm here tonight just to talk about the new parade route that I've seen posted. I have some concerns, and I just wanted to ask that that route be reconsidered and the traditional route be reinstated. Although the new route has places for people to watch, it is not nearly as conducive to the thousands that lined, that line to the traditional parade route. There are many businesses along the traditional parade route that have been, that have become a part of the parade by joining in the festivities and the moment. That is gone with this new route. The residents will also miss out. It will be very, it will be, sorry, I'm like shaking. It will be a very difficult job to get word out to the thousands of people that the traditional parade route has been moved. They will hear that there is a parade, and they will make plans to watch from their favorite spots. I work and I live within the city. I personally have not seen much advertising about the new parade route. I have seen a couple of posters at bus stops, but route change, the route change is written in small font at the bottom of the poster, and it goes easily unnoticed. In a previous year, the parade route was moved to Pearson Boulevard, and everyone set up chairs to watch the parade down Palm Drive, and it never came. It was on Pearson, and few knew. There may be additional planning issues. Yes, traffic has to be diverted, but Palm Springs seems to manage this, and so have we in the past. It is only for a couple of hours. I would even suggest possibly starting the parade route at Ironwood to open up Two Bunch Palm Drives to the city's traffic. I encourage you, along with many, along with the many other people in the community that took the time to sign petitions and make phone calls to the city hall to keep the traditional parade route and keep everyone a part of the holiday festivities. People will be disappointed if they can't be part of the parade route this year because the parade has moved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alexis Brody, followed by Dana Johnson.
I'm the Branch Manager of the library, and I just want to give you guys a few updates. We are hoping for groundbreaking early next year, maybe January, February is what we're aiming for, but I just don't have final word on that, but we will make sure everybody knows. And we are super excited for the new building. Plus, we are planning some new programs for adults for next year, and we would love your input. There's a post on our Facebook page asking for your feedback, saying what kind of programs you would like to see the library bring to the adult community and even the teens, because those are our hardest people to reach, and we want to make sure that you guys come into our library. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're excited to. Dana Johnson, followed by Matt Dudley.
I have to hold the clock until I get my, you know, start. Thanks. All right. Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members and staff, my name is Dana Johnson, and I'm a grateful member, resident of Desert Hot Springs. December 17th is a very special day for me. See, that's the day that I had an awakening. I was completely lost and broken, and I found myself homeless. I found myself penniless and friendless, and mostly, I was hopeless. But I have a brother that was living out in Desert Hot Springs. You might remember him, David Johnson. He has running recovery homes, and I made that call, and he said, "Dana, I've been waiting for that call. Come on out. There's a life out here that you will love." So I came out to Desert Hot Springs on December 17th of '07, and I fell in love with this place. I fell in love with the people. I fell in love with the community, and I learned a lot about who I was. You see, the first place David brought me was, was the Christian Center of Desert Hot Springs. Pastor Gary taught me to love myself. He loved me till I could love myself. Pastor Ron, another beautiful man, taught me what it's like to be a husband and a brother and a father. But then Pastor Ron, you know, we did a lot of great things with your help, you know, the Little Morongo property, you might remember that. So Christian Center, I'm part of the Board of Deacons at Christian Center. I'm very involved over there, and I'm just privileged to be there. So we made, so when Pastor Ron left, we had to look, ask ourselves, who are we? But importantly, who do we want to be? And we asked, where are we? But more importantly, where do we want to go? And so we did a little bit of a research here in Desert Hot Springs, and then a five-mile radius, you guys probably know this, the median age is 35, with young families. And so Pastor Gary was wonderful. Pastor Ron was wonderful, but we decided as a board to find a new pastor that could maybe reach this community, because I believe in this community. We believe in this community. We believe in outreach, and we believe that our best days are ahead of us. And so after a wonderful search, and it was just a pleasure meeting some really fantastic pastors, we found Pastor Matt Dudley. Pastor Matt Dudley is, he was installed last Sunday. As we entered into the season of Thanksgiving and celebration, I invite everybody to come join us at Christian Center and be, and come and, I was always searching to fill that void, and I found it in the love of Jesus. I now know what it had, what it is like to have that unspeakable joy. And so I invite everybody to come join us for the celebration, for the season of anticipation and reflection and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Pastor Matt Dudley, welcome to the community.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council. You know, I'm, I'm a bit humbled by the comments of my predecessor, Mr. Johnson. He's a good friend already, being new to the community. But I just wanted to take a moment and introduce myself. I'm Matt Dudley, and I am the new pastor over at Christian Center here on the corner of Eighth and Palm, and it's my honor to be a member of Desert Hot Springs now and to be here to serve the community. And as I understand it, Desert Hot Springs has been served for many years now by Christian Center, and we want to continue that tradition, and we want to continue to partner with the city in ways that we can serve and be a great asset to the community. So just want to say thank you to Desert Hot Springs for being a welcoming place and say that we are committed to continue to love this community and be a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Sure. I have one question for you, Pastor.
What time are your services?
Sunday morning at 10:30 is our service, so we'd love to have anybody come through and visit.
Thank you. Martin, I have you in the queue, but you're here to speak on item eight, isn't that correct?
No, I'm all right.
But you're here to speak on items, not on anything unrelated to the agenda tonight. Okay. When those items come up, I'll call the number of the item, I'll call public comment, and then you can come forth. You don't need to fill out a card, okay?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Then you can speak on that item now that's not on the agenda. Martin is on my last card. Anybody would like to speak in public comments on items not related to the agenda but related to the city? You may, you may, this will be the last call.
As we know, we just lost a city attorney. My concern is, and I don't know if there's anything on the city statutes that, when we lose a city attorney and we have litigation that he's worked on, is there a check and balance to make sure that he doesn't come back and work for the other side? Do we have anything documented to make sure that it doesn't come back to haunt the city and form a litigation or cause the city to lose a lawsuit because of that? And I had a concern about that because the way it happened, it happened so quickly, I wanted to make sure that you have a timeline when this gentleman or this council or attorney, if he updates, can come back and work for the city or against the city passing codes and stuff. And that's a very concern that I had. I'm sure some of the city residents of Desert Hot Springs are thinking, well, he was working on some touchy litigation issues that cost the city a lot of money if it goes the wrong way. So that was one comment I want to make. The other one was, I witnessed, we're getting ready to do a lighting contract, which is fine, but we're putting asphalt down after we're opening up the sidewalks.
Now, we're talking, that's a safety issue I'm bringing up. So that item is coming up in item eight, correct, Danny? Or, hold on, hold on one second. Just hold on one second. Danny or Rebecca, isn't that item number eight?
The award of construction for the Palm Drive Street Light and Safety Improvement Project is item number eight.
Is that what you're directly making comments to?
No, no. It's a safety issue that I witnessed.
Okay, if you get close to that item, I'm going to stop you again and have you speak to that item, okay?
We have wheelchair motorized, and they're very heavy. By putting asphalt down without putting a piece of plywood over, these vehicles get stuck and they fall over. So I witnessed it in Palm Springs, and there was an incident that happened here. So I'm just letting you know that that is a concern, and a lot of people watched this individual fall because of that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. We'll get some of those answers to you, Martin. All right, nobody else for public comments? Last call for public comments. I see somebody, nobody rising, I will close public comments this time and go to city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, I'm going to ask Danny to give an update on Palm Drive.
Yes, thank you very much. Start off with the Palm Drive Cycle 3 ATP Cycle 3 project, that is the current project that is under construction. It runs from Palm Drive, from Combinaventur to Two Bunch Palms. That project would be installing sidewalks, streetlights, and doing surface rehab. The sidewalks have been completed. Currently Spectrum is running all their vaults, and will be running fiber right after that. They'll be switching over services, and will be removing those poles, so you won't be, you'll be seeing those poles on the west side of Palm Drive. At the same time, we're doing some patchwork on the streets and preparing for the milling and paving, which will begin on Monday, December 2nd, right after Thanksgiving. New streetlights will be installed the next few weeks. We will begin all those streetlights, so you will start seeing some streetlights up on that segment as well. The Palm Drive Street Lights and Safety Improvement Project, that one tonight, City Council has that item for awarding the construction contract, and I'll be giving more details on that for that item. And we also, council in the last month awarded or moved forward with the SPA 21 grant, which we're currently working on the request proposals for design. That project will design Palm Drive ADA surface improvements and bike lanes from Pearson to Eighth Street. And just so everybody knows, the entryway, there are some palm trees that did not survive the transport and replant. It does happen. They did have warranty, and we will be replacing those on Friday of this week and next week as well. So there will be some maintenance going on at the entryway this week and next week as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. I'd like to ask our code compliance manager to come up, Christina, and I'd like you to discuss a little bit about the new approach to reporting issues within the city through Viewpoint now versus the old app that is no longer functioning.
Yeah, so we've had some issues with the app, specifically with iOS users. We have kind of combated that issue by using our new internal software, so residents can report complaints via our Viewpoint software. They'll log on, make a user credentials, and they can actually follow the process in real time. So it's a lot different than the app, more interactive. They can comment with staff as the process goes along. So we've posted the link on the city's Facebook page.
And, Mr. Mayor, for a second here, Chief Davis, could you talk about our CERT program a little bit?
Thank you, City Manager. I'm happy to report with the support of the city and the engagement with our Emergency Management Department. The City of Desert Hot Springs will be offering a CERT program for the community. It will be around the first week of December, and I think this is a valuable program for our city to get engaged in emergency response, should there be a disaster. I also brought Supervisor Eric Kayden from the Emergency Management Department. He can give a quick, brief overview on the CERT give a quick, brief overview on the CERT program. Thank you, Eric.
Good evening, our Honorable Mayor and Council members. CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. What the program is, is it teaches citizens how to be prepared for disaster. Day-to-day operations, fire, law, EMS is going to be there for you, but when we have that catastrophic event such as an earthquake, you're going to be left on your own. What we teach you what to do is how to prepare for disaster. We teach you how to use a fire extinguisher, how to shut off utilities, how to identify hazards in your home. We teach you how to do search and rescue in buildings that are lightly damaged, we teach you how, what buildings not to go into that are heavily damaged. We also teach you how to do disaster medical operation for triage, which means to sort out patients. So if we walked into this room here, there's 20 or 30 people, some are screaming, some are yelling, "Help!", some are not, what would you do? We teach you how to do that. And at the end of the class, what we do is a disaster scenario of all the stuff that we taught, we actually take the room and we kind of turn it upside down, we've actually done a class here too several years ago, and we simulate an earthquake. And then we have victims in there, and you go in and you do the search and rescue. You also, with this class, it's a free class that you get equipment with, that you get personal protective equipment such as helmet, goggles, CERT vest, and a CERT backpack with that. The class is free, we're able to do this through FEMA grants. The class will be coming up on December 6th through 8th, and it's going to be at Desert Crest Country Club. The address for it is 69400 South Country Club Drive, and you can register on our county website at RIVCO, R-I-V-C-O, cert.org. How the CERT program came about was because of the Mexico City earthquake back in 1985. There were over 700 spontaneous volunteers, but sadly, there were over 100 people that were killed because they didn't know what to do, and they didn't know what to look out for. A lot of people think, well, the class is kind of long, but that's 20 hours that we're going to prepare you to save lives. It's going to be neighbor helping neighbor. Imagine when we have that catastrophic earthquake, that this room will be moving six feet back and forth. How many people remember the North Ridge earthquake? That earthquake was a 6.7 earthquake, it was considered a moderate earthquake. Our San Andreas Fault is expected to go to 7.8, which will be a major catastrophic earthquake. With that, I'd love to take any questions.
Well, I just want to say it's, it's great to hear that we're bringing that back. Desert Hot Springs had a pretty strong team for quite a few years, and it just kind of fizzled out, so I'm really happy to see it coming back, and anyone that wants to be involved in that, I think it's going to be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I just have one more item. I'm going to ask our Deputy City Manager Luke Grady to give an update on the 12th Street Park.
Good evening. I'll give a little bit of background for some of the residents that might be hearing about this for the first time. Earlier this year, between January and June, the city ran a public engagement process to explore ideas for a park to be built on the northeast corner of 12th Street and Palm Drive. We had several public meetings and outreach events, and then in August, we submitted those ideas as part of a comprehensive grant application to the statewide park program for funding to create a new park on the two-acre space with proposed features like an amphitheater, a playscape, outdoor exercise equipment, walking paths, sitting areas, and shade structures. The grant amount that the city requested was 4.1 million. Last month, we received questions from the state asking for clarification on a few of the application specifications, and we sent a response, and then about a week later, we received a request from the state for a site visit. So while no award has been decided, we are encouraged by last month's questions and next month's site visit, and we hope to hear a decision before the end of the year.
Thanks, Luke, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Mayor and Councilmember comments, who would like to go first tonight? Don't want everybody jumping the queue all at once. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my screen up here, there we go. Since our last council meeting, I got the, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the, the POPS Award, which isn't for soda or for old people, it's for the Police Officer and Public Safety Awards. Every city gets to nominate a police officer and fire personnel for awards, and just want to take a second and congratulate our DHS winners, Officer Jason Jimenez, Battalion Chief Michael Martinez, and Police Services Manager Tom Peddinger, all got honored at that event, and it was a great event to go and see. Got a chance to attend the Marine Corps Birthday Celebration, put on by the Desert Hot Springs High School Marine Corps ROTC Program. You know, our junior ROTC program here is the best in the valley, and these kids are just, they're, they're just absolutely amazing, and I'm so proud of them. Part of the celebration is sharing the first slice of cake, which, by the way, was cut with a full-size sword by our own Sergeant Webb, who runs the ROTC here, and was shared with the oldest Marine president and the youngest. And the oldest was a charming woman named Dorothy Irwin, who served as the mess hall director at Camp Pendleton back in 1940, and she can still wear her original uniform. She moved to the desert in 1960, and just a dear lady. And I've attended our own Veterans Day Celebration as well, at Veterans Park, put on by the CCAC, and wanted to say good job to everyone who participated and worked on that event, it was great. Lastly, I attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. We had a very big agenda, purchased a lot more land for conservation around the city and preservation across the valley, including 650 acres in Thousand Palms just east of DHS, and another 193 acres up along Mission Creek, right at the entrance to Sands to Snow, right at the Mission Creek Preserve. And we've actually decided that the pronunciation of the acronym for Multispecies Habitat Conservation Program, which we all think is a mouthful, is now pronounced Mushcap. So, much easier to say. Lastly, was at, with, with all of my colleagues here, was at the Diversity DHS Pride Event up at Cabot's this last weekend, another stellar event. Congratulations to the Diversity DHS team, as well as the city staff that were so instrumental in putting that on. Another great event, brought a lot of visitors over to the valley from the other side, and was very well received. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
I had a pretty busy time this past two weeks. First thing I did is, I attended the Hot Springs Connection Conference. This was a conference, this is the second one they've ever had, we held it here in Desert Hot Springs, brought over 100 owners and operators of Hot Springs properties from around the country, over 20 states, four countries, and two provinces in Canada. We had a really nice welcoming dinner at Cabot's, and, Mr. Gardner, you forgot you were there.
I was letting you take the show.
Okay. And then we did an experiential day of tours of the various spas in Hot Springs properties that we have here in Desert Hot Springs. The overall impression was fantastic, they actually wanted to come back next year. The organizer would prefer to go somewhere else to give us a little break, and then come back. We do have some facilities that are scheduled to open up by that time, so probably in the next two or three years, we expect it to come back, probably with more people. But I want to give a special shout-out, one to the city for being so welcoming. Everybody commented how warm and welcoming everybody was here, what great hospitality. And a special shout-out to Roberta, who did a fantastic job organizing that dinner, and it went off, it was just stellar and perfect. So thank you so much for your help on that. Also did the Marine Corps 244th Birthday, that was a really, really great event, and I appreciated seeing that veteran who was 97 years old, that's, that's pretty old, and she was pretty spry for that age, I have to say. Looked good in her uniform, too. Also attended a, a biogas tour, a tour of a biogas facility, so this is a, it's called an anaerobic digestive facility out in Paris, and what they do is they take organic product, they put it in these digesters, and 15 days later, comes out with a clean product on the end, comes out with two products. One is it creates methane gas, which then gets captured and sent into SoCal Gas's system, and then they also at the end put out mulch. Now they have a, this company in particular has a proprietary microbe that actually operates at 130 degrees, so what it does is it kills any other bacteria. So the product at the end is pure, and they actually bag it and they sell it at Lowe's. So if you go to Lowe's, you may get some of their product, but it was a really great thing to see. Big, big facility, very quiet, no odor, very amazing, actually, so, very interesting. I also attended the SEVAG Energy and Environmental Resources Meeting, Committee Meeting, that was very eye-opening. There's a bill going, if it's not passed, it's in the process of passing, 1383, which is going to require us to reduce our organic waste in the landfill, so you'll probably hear more about that. And, let's see, what else did I do? I also attended DHS Pride, that was very great, everybody was there. Dawn Wells was one of the people, that was Mr. Betts' crush. She was Mary Ann in Gilligan's Island, she was great to see. And I also attended the Veterans Day event, and today went to the SEVAP Economic Summit in Palm Springs, that was quite interesting also. So, pretty busy two weeks. That's it.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it was very busy. You know, we're, we're blessed in this city, as we had three veterans events going on. We had the first one that was organized by the CCAC, and I wasn't able to make that because I woke up on Saturday thinking I was going to go to that, the event on Sunday, and then realized that I had to go down and open up the radio station. So if I wasn't there, there'd have been a whole bunch of dead air, and so anyhow, the rest of the council made it, and I understand from what I saw, the coverage, it was a great event. There was a group of veterans who were pretty set on wanting to do something on Veterans Day itself, and so there was a small ceremony. I just want to thank the City Manager for accommodating that group, that originally we started out with a group of people that's going to stand in a circle and, and read poetry, and so I came across a gentleman and, who had written a book of poetry, showed it to me and opened it up, and one of them was a veterans poem. And so I invited him to come and read a couple of poems at this event, thought that would be nice. Well, as it turns out, the speaker who was supposed to show up for this second event didn't show up, don't know what happened, everybody's looking around for a speaker, and so Ronald ended up reading two poems, and then by de facto, de facto became the, the program speaker. And he has some issues with mental health, and he acknowledged that there. He's been fine for many years, but man, when you could see the, the look on his face, so it was kind of out of a serendipity-type thing, something really special came out of that, and it was just really nice to see somebody who doesn't get recognition much end up being thrown into the limelight, and so, you know, we're blessed. We had three events, and then the one down at the VFW, which we managed to make it to, so it was all, everything's good. Great job on the DHS Pride Festival, and yes, Dawn Wells, Mary Ann was there, and I'm happy to let you know, she knows as much about Gilligan's Island as I do, so. I got to talk to her, get her picture, and told her a few fun tidbits about Gilligan's Island, and she says, "Yeah, yeah, I know that, I know that." So anyhow, that was really good. I waited a mi, a long, long time to meet Mary Ann, so. The Marine Corps 244th Birthday was wonderful, Friends of the Desert Mountains, Councilmember Gardner and I attended that, that was a good event, a little rich, but man, they raised some money, get those people up here to help us. Attended RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, filled in as alternate for the mayor, and then the next day went right back to Riverside for Airport Land Use Commission. Just held my SEVAG Public Safety Committee Meeting. Went to the SEVAP Economic Summit this morning, which was a good, well-attended event, very well-attended event, and that was good. Just a quick thought, and we'll get one other thing here, I wanted to finally wrap up this deal with the Southern California Association of Governments and RENA. I'm going to get into that in a second, but, you know, the thought crossed my mind of this, you look at all these cell towers we've got going all up over the city, and I don't know if anybody realizes, but I was reading some stuff, like an NBC report, a report on National Public Radio, 45% of the cell traffic is junk robocalls. So I know everybody's getting a lot of these calls, so I'm sitting there saying, are we putting up cell towers, are 45% of the cell towers going up our city just to accommodate these robocalls? And I know that we don't want to get an agenda item started here, but, and I certainly appreciate that everybody that's out there that's got a cellphone wants to get a good signal. But, you know, I'm wondering if we just go ahead and put up a moratorium, any more cell towers, until somebody figures out how to stop all these robocalls? So it's a thought, we'll see. I, I wanted to put a resolution to not go to daylight savings time, I didn't win out on that one yet, but maybe I'll win on the cell towers. So anyhow, hey, you never know. All right, so getting to more serious matter, I'll just, I'll go through this real quickly, but there was quite a sea change up in Southern California Association of Governments. Normally what happens is, on big votes that are coming up, Los Angeles and Orange County show up, they dwarf the board with their votes, because they hold a lot of seats, and we end up getting the short end of the stick. What was happening recently was dividing up what cities were going to get low-income housing. And with all the talk about housing and low-income housing and the housing crisis in California, it's not a bad thing to want to create this housing. But for example, our number, which is roughly 4,200 units, 4,200 units, was scheduled to go to 8,000 and some odd units. So, and if you figure we got 9,000 homes, half of our homes were going to be scheduled to be low-income. Now it's much more complicated than that, but just to, to cut to the, to the chase on this one, the purpose of RENA is to create housing where the jobs exist and to prevent urban sprawl. But the way this thing was headed was, everything was getting pushed off into Imperial County, San Bernardino County, Riverside County, and then to a lesser degree Ventura County. And if you looked at all the numbers that everybody's going to get, but Coachella, I think was going to get, what was it, 15,000 new low-income units, and it was just a huge challenge. So anyhow, every city, so what happened was Riverside, the City Riverside Mayor Rusty Bailey went and cut a deal with Eric Garcetti, the mayor of Los Angeles, and surprise, surprise, Los Angeles walked in and supported a much more equitable and better plan. One that says, you know what, we're going to put the housing, the low-income housing where the jobs are, we're not just going to push it off onto other cities, so. And, and just so you know, even the numbers that we have now, every city out there that got less numbers, it's still going to be a challenge to go create all those homes. It's not an easy task, so it's not like anybody's shirking their responsibility, but it was just an impossible number that was coming along, it wasn't working, it was just creating more sprawl. So if anybody's interested in seeing how the numbers shook out, I won't bore you with reading all those, but the end result was, Los Angeles and Orange County got more numbers, and we got much less, and they called it the Rusty Bailey Amendment, I call it the Rusty Bailey Miracle, I've been going up there for 10 years, and I've just watched LA and Orange County come in and dominate on critical moments like that, and this time they didn't. So we made out well, and I think it worked out good. That's it, taking up time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Pye.
I'm going to be short, and I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving filled with gratefulness.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to Mission Springs Water District for that report tonight, it's always great to see when these assessment districts get put into place, and that the waste is going to be in the plant rather than the ground, and all the problems we have and have had in the future, so thank you for your work on that. The Hot Springs Conference was just wonderful, the city did a fantastic job on, on putting together the welcome at the Cabot's Museum, and I was fortunate enough to be asked to give the welcome. Councilmembers Gardner and Griffith were, were great hosts, well, Mr. Griffith was a great host, Mr. Gardner was there to help out and take over for me as the speaker after, after I had to leave due to not feeling well that night. So just thank you to everybody participating in that. When we get people that come from all over the country that have Hot Springs and we're able to see our city and be able to utilize, or see our facilities and understand what we have here, it's always a great partnership, so thank you to everybody that was involved. The Community Cultural Affairs Commission, thank you for a fantastic event again on the 10th. I just hope in the future, people can understand the reasoning behind our commissions and what they're trying to accomplish and support them completely, as I have. It's a shame to see that the chair tonight had to resign up here and not continue the work that he was doing. Not everybody's always going to agree on everything, but the city council should support our commissions in full on their pathways, and that's what I continue to do. If you didn't get a chance to say goodbye to Donna Lee Poyzina, she was our local photographer for so long, lived here in the community, had to move outside the community, will be back to take pictures, she says, and be part of the community, and is going to keep the Desert Hot Springs Neighborhood Group Facebook page going. So if you were concerned about that, she's agreed to keep that going for the time being until she can find someone to take that over. It's really an important piece to Desert Hot Springs, and I think she deserved the accolades that we gave her, it was last Sunday, right? Last Sunday. I attended the Erika Meeting, which is our radio system, Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communication Authority, I am the representative for Desert Hot Springs. A lot of you might have heard on the news that recently, we were shutting the JPA, which is five cities, we're shutting off radio traffic to the media. is five cities, was shutting off radio traffic to the media. And that did happen earlier this year. The reason for it is that there's a system called CLUTS that gives the information to our police officers based on the people that they're asking for personal information from over the radio. Because our system is encrypted, the policy is that you are not to give that, the radios over to certain agencies without permission or whatever it is. It was a split vote with the authority at one point. It was a stalemate because there was two for, two against, and one sustaining. With the new election as of last year, there was new members brought on board. They wanted to reconsider it, and the media was brought back in to give comments. Again, it was voted on. It was passed to open the radio system to the media based on user agreements, based on these reasoning. One is that the California Highway Patrol, the largest police agency in the state of California, does not have to adhere to this policy and can allow their radio traffic over. You can actually get their radio traffic on your phone if you dial in the right numbers. Three cities felt it was okay to give this information, be able to let the media have the information so that they can report out to the public in emergency situations. That's the basics for the media to have radio traffic. Palm Springs voted yes with a caveat that the Attorney General will be in town in December to speak to their city council to clarify whether it is legal or not legal for this information to be given out. Desert Hot Springs and Indio have opened up their radios. We do still have a problem because we utilize Castillo City for dispatching services. And with the way the radios are set up, the information can't just be given out yet because their city has voted no not to give the information out. So, there's still a lot of things to be worked out. I just wanted to keep you in the loop on where we're at today. Wanted to thank all the Pride Festival volunteers, Sam Messler and the Desert Hot Springs Diversity Desert Hot Springs for the way they put on this event again. It seems to grow every year and just be a fantastic event. Don Wells was also a crush of mine, but I didn't get a chance to get in line before Mr. Betts. And I knew he was going to take up a lot of time, so I just bypassed the line and didn't want to wait.
I didn't see why you were in line that long.
So, I'm just playing.
I know.
But for the most part, it was a fun event to attend, and thank you to everybody. I was asked to speak at the INTERACT Meeting. If you don't know what the INTERACT Club is, it's a high school group of kids through Rotary, our Rotary Club here locally that, it's leadership program is what it is, basically. They go out in the community, do volunteer work. It started with a couple of kids. It's grown to, I think there was about thirty in the room today. When I spoke to them, I had ten minutes to answer some questions that they had based on the city. They do it during their lunch period. So, they bring their lunch in, have their INTERACT meeting, and I was a guest speaker for ten, fifteen minutes. So, wanted to thank them for that. And lastly, besides saying happy Thanksgiving to everybody, thank you, Ms. Pye, for reminding us that Thanksgiving is really right around the corner. Where'd this year go? But happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays, everybody. It might become public knowledge because I sent an email out to all city staff today to meet me at the store and buy gift cards. And that was not true. My Gmail was hacked. So, if you are on my list and you got an email from me asking you to meet me at the store and buy gift cards for your department, it wasn't me. So, I hope nobody went to the store. But with that said, I think that's all I have on my agenda tonight. So, I'm going to move on to public hearings. Our first item is item number four, zoning map amendment, ZMA. You got the, you did go to the store?
No. Yeah, I got a whole pocket of gift cards here for you. No, I have to announce that I'm recusing from item number four on the agenda because of a campaign finance conflict. So.
Thank you. Anyone else have any conflicts on this item? Okay, Mr. Gardner will be stepping off the dais. I'll be announcing the item while he's stepping off. Item number four is zoning map amendment, ZMA 01-19, and general plan amendment, GPA 01-19, application to change the zoning and general plan land use designations for R/VS-L. That stands for residential visitor-serving low density and RL, low-density residential to VSV, visitor-serving village on a hundred-and-eight acre site located on both sides of Yerkes Road north of Sangre Goniale Street. This will be our community development director, Rebecca Demme.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The applicant, Courtney Mo, on behalf of Bubbling Wells Ranch Resort and Spa is requesting the zone map and general plan map amendment to change the land use designation. I won't go ahead and repeat that since you did it so wonderfully. The one-hundred-acre site is on both sides of Yerkes Road north of Sangre Goniale Street. No development or groundbreaking is proposed in this, at this time. The future development will require additional review compliance with the Environmental, California Environmental Quality Act. On September 10th, 2019, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the city council to approve the project as presented. This site has a host of existing structures, including a main house, several guest houses, old mining town-style buildings, and a stage. There's a small twelve-acre lake surrounded by trees and vegetation. The site also has water wells with both hot and cold water resources. As mentioned, the current application is only for redesignation of the land use district to allow for future development of a resort, hotel, and spa. This next slide shows a little bit of the idea they have, although, as mentioned, this is not the current proposed, currently being proposed, the site, but just their future idea to come back for approval in the future. You guys did receive a letter of opposition, which was provided to you after the posting of the agenda, and that has been forwarded to the council. And with that, we recommend that you find that the project is exempt from CEQA and that you approve the project based on, subject to the proposed conditions of approval. And by doing that, you would also adopt a resolution for the general plan amendment and an ordinance for the zone map amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the city council before I open up the public hearing? Mr. Gardner's not here for that. He probably was for something else. So, I don't see a best in the queue. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. And I will take testimony from the applicant. Who is coming forth now?
We really appreciate you guys considering moving forward with the zoning change.
Please state your name for the record.
David Perera.
Thanks.
And, you know, if you have any questions, we would love to hear it. And in terms of community feedback, we're listening, and we'd like to continue with our planning and getting more feedback from the community and adjusting our plans to come up with something that is suitable for the neighborhood and the property itself.
Great. Don't go far. You'll have the chance to rebut any public testimony here in a minute. All right. At this time, there's no questions for the applicant? I see none. We'll open testimony of those in favor of this project. Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Yes. Please come forth, state your name.
Hi, I'm Jessica Visiero, and I'm in favor of the project. I have, I'm speaking in favor of the city's zoning approval. The proposed development is a fantastic opportunity to showcase how we can protect the environment on this particular land. I feel any other developer would not really take this into account. And I have been blessed to work on this project with the Mo family for the past six months. And I just wanted to say that I really like this community and the property, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Please state your name, and your time will begin.
Hi there. My name is Sharla Heimer, and I'm actually the contracted party that is going to be purchasing the land. My company's name is ROR Capital, and that stands for Return on Relationships. I had planned on bringing my ninety-four-year-old grandmother here today, but she didn't feel so well, and I didn't want to push it because I'd like to show her the property with a lot of enthusiasm. My point in bringing her was that this property has a whole lot of meaning in terms of health, wellness, longevity. Her mother lived until, she was a hundred and five, so I'm planning on my grandmother living until she's a hundred and twenty. And the opportunity that I have had in this, in location, Desert Hot Springs, when we started this project, it seemed like it was just going to be a resort. And after the time that we had being on the property with Courtney and Audrey Mo, everything changed. And it became a family and a legacy and a community and a place. And it came my entire career full circle, where I learned to build stadiums under the Larry Lucchino and San Diego Padres regime and to bring a community together. There is no part of me whatsoever that has any desire to be a part of anything that brings conflict or disagreement. It is one-hundred percent about community and longevity and healing and health and how do we get the news out about this place? Because after four months of me being on this property, I never went in the hot spring. And I never did anything remotely to care about my health and wellness. We were so concerned about the project. And my design and development duo team that came up with beautiful concepts and will make it look absolutely amazing, it became so much more. As we started trying to address what is right for this community and being, again, bringing the wellness and removing the stigma that anything else that's coming into the city has, I want to be a part of something to be proud about. I want to leave a legacy for myself and my kids. My family is a hundred percent in on this financially. This is a financial decision for us. And my partners wound up bringing some parties to the property as to how we're going to be a differentiator and looking at programming. And we wound up coming across someone that wound up looking at my health to find out that I'm not that healthy right now and, in fact, have some things to address. And I thought, wow, the funny thing is, is the natural hot springs work. And I do feel better, and I think that this is an amazing place, and I want to be on the journey to put this as a world-renowned location that I can leave behind for my family and everybody else here. And the one thing as I have done every time I've come to town is either stay at a different hotel and talk to all the people that work at every counter and every location and ask them, like, what do you need here? And, you know, the biggest thing for me is, I've been doing commercial real estate for essentially my entire career, so twenty-five years or so. And the biggest thing that I was taught was, you first figure out what the people need, then you build. And we're going to make sure that everything is right, and it's what the people want, and it brings what this community wants. And so, I just thank you for an opportunity that has changed my life, literally, from, I can't even tell you, and meeting Courtney and Audrey Mo, who have been apparently a staple in the community. I only want to become a greater part of that, and I want them to know that as they start their next chapter in life, that, first of all, we didn't even want them to leave the property, but I want them to know that the people that carry that property forward are people that they can be proud of. And that's why we're here. So, I thank you for this opportunity, and I hope that we have it to carry forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more testimony in favor? All right. See no one else coming forth? Any testimony in opposition? Yes, sir. Please come forth, state your name.
My name is Gerald McKenna. I live in, on Monterey Road, which is adjacent to this property. I built a house there in 2008 and have lived there ever since. I've lived in this city since 2006. I also own a vacant parcel along the block, also abutting this property. I'm opposing it because it's a mistake. It's a planning mistake. And it's not a small mistake. It's a big mistake. It's a mistake that has citywide implications, because you would be creating a new commercial zone in the far southeast corner of the city, and that will have impact all over the city. That will impact downtown. That will impact every other commercial zone. My objection really is that this is a change from residential visitor-serving to visitor-serving village. Visitor-serving village sounds very nice, but it's not nice. It's a commercial zone. There are things you can do in visitor-serving village you cannot do in residential visitor-serving. You could open a swap meet there, and you could do that the day after this ordinance passes, because you will not have control once it's been rezoned. They will have the right to do all of those things that I listed in my letter, such as even a bus station, for instance. These are by right. It's also a fairly major shift in the balance of the city. There are a hundred and ninety acres of commercial property in the city of Desert Hot Springs, and this would add a hundred and eight, taking it to two-hundred-and-ninety-eight. The current ratio of commercial to residential is ten percent. The new ratio would be sixteen percent, nearly seventeen, actually. So, when I heard Councilmember Betts talk about, where are we going to put these low-income residences? Be prepared for forty acres of low-density residential disappearing. Be prepared for forty, sixty acres of visitor-serving residential disappearing and becoming commercial. And in the city's code, you cannot build residential property, you cannot build residences on commercial property. It's right there. So, the decision you have is, do we make a major change in the balance of the city's residential-commercial, and do we do it in the southeast corner where there is virtually nothing else? And then, look at what's next to it, not just me. I live in low-density, residential-low-density. The whole north side of this property is residential-low-density. The east side of the property, residential-low-density. The south side of the property, residential-low-density. The west side of the property is the Two Bunch Palms Resort, and it's identically zoned to this. It's half visitor-serving residential, and it's half low-density residential. So, don't be surprised if they show up here in a month or so saying, "How about us?" You know, there's another forty acres of low-density residential that just vanishes, becomes commercial. It's just not a good idea. Look at the other side of the street. There's an elementary school there. About half of the catchment area for that elementary school will disappear if Two Bunch Palms does what this applicant proposes to do. And I should mention, it's in the letter, but maybe I'll draw attention to it here. The whole planning commission process was very, very flawed. They didn't notice this properly. They didn't take time to consider it. No one discussed it. They simply voted it through. And it shouldn't be done this way. There's no environmental impact analysis on the table, because the planning department says, "Well, we're not planning to build anything." But that's not what the law requires. The law requires you to consider the environmental impact of even a zone change. And this is a general plan amendment. This is big. This is a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak on this item as opposed to this? I see no one coming forth. Does anybody like to speak, take testimony from anyone in a neutral position? Sir, state your name. Your time will begin.
Klatzke.
Please do it in the mic.
Jeff Klatzke.
Thank you very much.
I live right next to this property, and I know the Moes, and I am not sure what's going to happen. I'm worried about traffic. I'm worried about noise. I'm worried about the general use of the property. I'm not saying, "Don't do it," but I'm concerned what's going to happen. And what the gentleman just said before, it's very eye-opening. And I've yet to talk to the people that want to do what they say they want to do with it. So, I'm kind of sitting here saying, "What do I do?" I'm directly impacted by their choices. I live literally in the street adjacent to the property. Been there for thirty years. I wonder if you've all thought this through? I mean, really? Just a question. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else in a neutral position would like to speak? I see no one coming forth at this time. At this time, I will let the applicant have opportunity to rebut anything that was said here tonight.
So, what I'd like to say is, you know, there are some procedural things that have been brought up, and there are concerns from the community. We do look forward to addressing any and all concerns. I've invited everyone with concerns, and I apologize that we haven't met yet, to come by the property and discuss the things that we have planned for the future. Zoning is a very serious thing. It is permanent for the most part. And we all have to talk about it. We all have to do the right thing. We have to discuss what our opposition really is. I maintain that residential, the residential zoning, is the most disastrous thing for the environment.
I know you want to speak to them because you're talking about what they're, but you got to speak into the mic so it's recorded, sorry.
So, I think residential zoning is more destructive to the environment. We have an opportunity to actually make money off of preserving the land that's there. We do butt up against Two Bunch Palms. We are a part of the SPA zone. By changing the zoning here, we would actually round out the SPA zone as it's drawn out in front of City Hall. So it is definitely been part of the city's long-range plan. And I think we are going to give you the most low-impact solution to this property. And again, we welcome the whole community to participate. And really, if something does negatively affect you and you have those concerns, when we go for our CUP, come to our open houses, work through the plans. We've already amended our plans based on the feedback we've gotten so far. And we'd be happy to share all of that with you. After the meeting, I'll stay behind and answer any questions anyone may have.
Before I close the public hearing, was there any questions for the applicant? I see none. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the comments that were made today. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and open a discussion for City Council to staff. Ms. Pye.
I have a question for staff. I need for you to explain exactly what we're doing. We're not in the development stage.
That's correct. You're basically, what's on the agenda today is to prove, one, a resolution. The resolution would change the general plan map. So it would change the general plan map so that the general plan designation of this site is proposed to be visitor-serving village. The second item is the zoning map amendment. And it is being proposed to be changed as well to the visitor-serving village. So there is no proposed development that you're reviewing, but you are reviewing the change in general plan and the change in zone.
So when we, when it comes through for development, it has to go through the planning commission. It does have to come here. There's a process, but we're not there, correct?
Not all uses would come to the city council. Some uses, especially when it's going from vacant to a use, would go through the planning commission process. So it depends if there's new buildings or exactly what they're doing. But basically, the process would go to planning commission for the most part. Less likely that it would come up all the way to city council.
Any other questions? Mr. Betts?
Okay, so we're approving a zone change, a zoning amendment to the general plan. And we're allowed to do that four times a year, correct?
That's correct.
How many times we've done it this year?
Twice.
Okay. So we're within that. It's not like before old days where we were doing it 200 times a year, right?
That's correct.
During the housing boom. And this is only changing the zoning on the staff report under, if I got the right thing, Item C, Resolution of City Council, City Desert Hot Springs, California, finding that the project described. Are we approving the project or are we only approving the zoning?
The project as described is the general plan amendment and the zone change.
Okay, so the word project doesn't refer to ultimately what's going to come before in a public hearing as a project going through the planning commission and the council? The project is, the technical term of that is changing the zoning?
That's correct.
Okay. So I've had some people ask me about that. And we're going from residential visitor, we're going to residential visitor-serving low-density. Can you explain these R V S L, R L, and V S V designations for me, please?
Yes, so the, currently, the property is in split into two different designations, kind of like right down the middle. Can you put the presentation back up? There we go. So as you can see, the top part is residential visitor-serving low. So in residential visitor-serving, there are different permitted uses. It basically permits both residential and recreational uses through conditional use permits, development permits, and has certain items that are permitted as well. And then residential low is simple, single-family residential.
Okay, the council isn't giving up, the city isn't giving up its entire ability to determine what goes there, correct? Just because of a zoning change? I mean, if somebody wants to come in and put in something that the council doesn't think is in keeping with that area, do we have the ability to deny that?
You still have to, the ability that if the findings aren't met, that the project doesn't meet the requirements of our general plan or our zoning, then yes, they would still be able to make the findings at the, again, as I mentioned, probably the planning commission level. That the project being proposed doesn't meet the intent of the code or the general plan, then yes, it would be able to be denied.
Okay, and this is generally visitor-serving was the intent, correct?
The current designation for the north half is currently visitor-serving.
Which is the same as Two Bunch Palms Resort.
Two Bunch Palms Resort is visitor-serving low. However, their zoning is specific plan and does have, is commercial resort on where Two Bunch Palms is as part of their specific plan. So this shows their, as you see adjacent, their general plan, but their zoning is different. Their zoning is specific plan area. And where, as I mentioned, where the resort is, is commercial visitor-serving uses.
And we have hot water wells on this property?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a pretty unique geological feature in a city. Then I imagine there's also cold water. So you're straddling the two aquifers, okay. I'll wait and see what my other councilmembers have to say. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff? Mr. Grivett?
So I just want to clarify some stuff. Visitor-serving village does, in that category, it seems like it's a catch-all category where you can have many different things, right?
Visitor-serving village is more of a commercial visitor-serving use. The village, the way I tried to, and obviously I wasn't here when it was written, but the way I tried to interpret it, the village seemed more of a compatible use to residential versus just the straight visitor-serving zone. So that's why we worked with them and kind of chose the visitor-serving village. It had the uses that they were interested in doing, but was a little less all commercial encompassing as the visitor-serving designation.
Okay, and so just because these things are permitted does not necessarily mean they would be approved?
If they're permitted uses, then we would work with them to make sure that it was compatible still with the neighborhood and the environment.
Right, so in other words, in Mr. McKenna's letter, there were some items on there that I don't think would be suitable for that neighborhood. So would that be something we would say, yes, they are permitted in this type of zone, but they may not be approved for this particular project?
If there is a use that is permitted in the zone, then we have to permit it if they meet all of the other requirements of the general plan and zoning ordinance. If there is a way to find that that specific use is not compatible with that specific location, then we have the ability to deny it. But I can't just give you a blanket, yes, you can deny something that shows as a permitted use.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, that ends our discussion and public hearing process. What is the council's wishes on the staff recommendation?
For recommendation A through, A through D.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem Pye. I have seconded it. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This action includes an ordinance for the zoning map amendment portion. It's an ordinance of the city council. Finding that the project described herein is exempt from CEQA under Sections 15061, B3 of the California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Sections 15,000, and what follows. Number two, amending the city zoning map 01-19 to reflect a change in zoning map from R V S L, residential visitor-serving low-density and low-density residential to visitor-serving village for the 108-acre site located at Bubbling Wells Ranch, site on both sides of Yerxa Road, north of San Gorgonio Street. The ordinance will return for second reading at the December 3 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. I'm going to jump around the agenda because I know there's a few people in the audience for certain things tonight. I'm going to jump to the administrative calendar and I'm going to take up item number nine. Have Mr. Gardner come back in the room. And Mr. Betts, I think you have a recusal on this one? The Rancho del Oro Resolution? Did you want to go ahead and state your resolution?
Okay, on the item nine, Rancho del Oro landscaping, I have homes inside the development. So that would mean that I would be voting on something which I have a direct financial interest. So I will be recusing. Madam City Attorney, do I leave the room on this one or am I entitled to sit in the audience and watch?
It would be up to you. I would recommend leaving the room for this one.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, with that said, as Mr. Betts is stepping off the dais, I'll read the item. Resolution of intent, resolution of intent to annex 259 assessable parcels, commonly known as Rancho del Oro to the City of Desert Hot Springs Landscape and Lightning Maintenance District Number Two. Bless you. This will be our Public Works Director, Daniel Pores.
And actually, Nick Hacker, our Public Works Manager, will be presenting this one.
Nick, all yours.
Okay. This item is regarding the Rancho del Oro Landscape Maintenance District. The Rancho del Oro residential subdivision is located on the north side of Mission Lakes Boulevard between Sonora Drive and West Drive, just south of Avenida Jalisco. The subdivision tracks were developed and recorded in 1992 and 1993. There's 259 single-family homes were completed and the majority of the perimeter landscaping was installed. However, no provisions were made to maintain any of the perimeter landscaping improvements and no assessment district was established or formed. The typical process for forming such a district is for the property owners in each subdivision to form a landscape maintenance district in which the cost maintaining the landscaping is funded through an assessment that is paid for by the corresponding benefiting lots. Throughout the last few years, city staff worked with residents of Rancho del Oro in an effort to establish a permanent solution to fund the landscaping maintenance. In 2017, city council had a requisite meeting and public hearing to initiate annexation into the district. Ultimately, however, annexation into the district failed. Subsequently, the city has determined to present the annexation to the property owners for a vote one last time and held a property owners' meeting to discuss the process on November 6, 2019. Staff presents the attached resolution for the city council's consideration to initiate annexation into the district. Should the city council adopt the attached resolution, it will commence the process for annexation into the district and the properties located on the north side of Mission Lakes Boulevard between West Drive and Sonora Drive. On both sides of De Choya Drive, extending approximately 305 feet north of Mission Lakes Boulevard. On the east side of Sonora Drive, between Mission Lakes Boulevard and Avenida Dorado. On the south side of Avenida Barona, between West Drive and Del Ray Lane. As mentioned above, this development is commonly referred to as Rancho del Oro Track Map Number 23866. Should the city council adopt the resolution, ballots will be mailed out tomorrow, November 20, 2019. The public hearing will be scheduled for January 21, 2020 when council calls the election and the ballots are counted. We have web here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, for that report. I'm going to open it up, before I open up public comments, I'm going to give it over to the subcommittee. Myself and former councilmember Joe McKee spent a lot of years working on this with the community and obviously it failed the first time. Worked with the community again, a very strong group of people who wanted to bring it back again. And unfortunately, I didn't have a lot of time. My time was stretched thin. So I appointed Mayor Protem Jampai, Councilmember Gardner, to the committee to work with the residents of Rancho del Oro to find a solution to this. And I'll give it over to Mayor Protem at this time to give a report.
What I want to do is, I do want to hear your comments first because I want to make sure, I did talk to some people today, but I want to make sure I'm asking, answering your questions.
With that said, I will start with public comments. Anyone would like to speak on this? Please state your name and your time will begin. This is an administrative calendar item, so you'll have three minutes.
This is a first for me, so I am very nervous. I'm Karen Miller. Paul Miller. We live in Rancho del Oro. I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the landscape management issue of Rancho del Oro. The resident committee of Rancho del Oro has been blindsided by the lack of communication from the city. We were notified regarding the meeting held on 11/6 and just learned that the city RDO proposal is on tonight's agenda. This left us very little opportunity to reach out to the voters in the RDO community to pass along information that would help in getting the proposal passed. If the council acts on this item tonight and the ballots are mailed tomorrow, we can expect the naysayers to prevail in the election, which means they will say no. Upon examination of the proposal, it appears there are many errors in the engineer's report. The expenses for the maintenance of the landscape areas inflates the annual assessment for the individual property owners. This would surely add to the possibility the measure will be rejected by the majority of the voters. To correct the errors and to communicate real facts, the resident committee requests the city manager schedule a study session immediately to iron out those portions of the proposal that are incorrect. If corrected, the total amount of the assessment would be reduced. Some of the items contained within the proposed engineer's report/budget are already covered in citywide LLMD Number One. A city council study session is absolutely necessary so that all significant issues can be reviewed and hopefully resolved. The city had promised that they would schedule the vote, taking into consideration a reasonable amount of time necessary for RDO property owners to promote a yes vote in favor of the proposed assessment. We are still waiting to be provided a comprehensive list of property owners and their address. We encourage the council to hold off on approval of the assessment. We have received many promises that have not come to fruition. It is only fair that this can happen tonight. And we just feel that we want to be able to talk to our, take a letter, go around door-to-door to our fellow residents to be able to explain to them what this is all about, that if they vote no, they're up a creek without a paddle. And I wouldn't think that the community, the whole community, the council, would want to have that happen. I mean, our community is a fairly large community. It's the first one in Rancho, in Desert Hot Springs built with sidewalks. We were known. It was the community, the place to live. And now it looks like heck. And we don't want it to, and I mean, I had to choose my words, anyway.
Stay next to a retired reverend, yes.
Yeah, pastor, just shut your ears. And we want, we want that to, yeah. That's how we've been married 58 years, yester. So we want our area to look nice. It's good for the community. It's good for further development. I mean, who wants to live in a, you don't even want to go past the outside to look at what's inside. And we have many beautiful homes in our, in our area. And we really, really would like to have this delayed. We had that meeting on 11/6, which was a disaster. And really would like to have the opportunity to be able to do some background on this. And we have a group of people that are willing to work with each other and to get into the neighborhood and try to encourage that they vote yes on this. But we can't even vote yes on it with some of the conditions that are in it.
Thank you very much. Did a fantastic job. Didn't think you'd be nervous.
Okay, I'll go back and I'll pass out.
We'll wait till the item's over, so. Any other public comments on this item? All right. I will close public comments this time. Ms. Pye?
Okay. First of all, I want to know, who's your resident group? Because I've been meeting with a resident group. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you come back up?
Don't pass out yet. You're gonna have to answer some questions.
I have been meeting with a resident group.
With Herb Moon. We have Herb Moon and Steve Sapota, and Colleen, and I'm not sure what her last name is.
Okay. I just want to make sure I--
Yeah, it's the same people. But we have new, new people that are part of that, that are new residents to our Rancho del Oro community, and they're very-- in which the people that I have talked to are very interested in having something positive happen. Getting together like we did on 11/6--
Okay.
We'll just forget that.
No, we're not gonna forget. I can't forget that. We did meet on November 6. I was asked about having a workshop. We did. Now, how the audience behaved--
That was a workshop?
That's where we explained everything that was happening. Now, how the audience behaved, I can't go there.
Well, we can't either. I mean, we were--
We agree that--
We agree with that, and those are the people that you're gonna have voting no all over the place.
Let's do this. We shouldn't have a back-and-forth this time.
No, we should not.
Unless there's specific questions. Let me get your report, and then let's city council--
So you have a specific-- any more questions from me?
That was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I talk to him?
To Nick? Yes, he's staff. Yes, you can have a back-and-forth with him and yell at him.
Did you--
I just wouldn't-- with Mrs. Miller, I would not do that.
You mailed addresses?
Yeah. We had, uh, we mailed all the news-- or all the letters going to the res-- or to the owners that were having the meeting on the sixth--
And you mailed them to that resident group?
To the owners of the properties out there.
No, no. Herb Moon.
He's an owner of the property, so yes, he--
Yeah, he got a letter. Anyone that owns a property in there got a letter.
He didn't get a list of property owners.
Yeah.
He can't go buy property owner and--
Wait, wait, wait.
Sorry. Gotta get you on the mic.
Don't yell at her either.
Herb Moon was not provided a list of property owners and addresses. We can't give that. That's a privacy law, that you can't give that information.
Did we discuss that the first time we looked at the PowerPoint?
I believe so. And we said we couldn't provide it.
I'm thinking we did that, too. The expenses, I, I, you, I was told that Walkwood, you said that we would do irrigation and repairs and what have you. Now, what we have on page 258, and-- And I believe this is the engineer's report. It shows-- let me see. No, that's not it. Nope, that's not it. I'll get there. It shows the list of how you get to 331.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 258. Let me try. On that, it talks about irrigation, maintenance. And my assumption, that's not what you said. Well, you said that we would take care of the maintenance in the start. Should the vote be voted yes. But you're going to have maintenance with the assessment group further on. And so, that's two different things that you were talking about.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'm like, okay. Um, we started meeting with Mr. Moon. It was in the summer.
June, July.
And we were communicating the best we could, and we communicated after that, and Nick joined the two of us again. I'm trying to think of something else that he's told me. But we explained the situation, we explained where we were going, how this happened from the beginning. You can see, um, Herb and the other person wanted for me to see the parameters. So I said, I'll see what I can do. And then I find out that we should not be taking care of the property. Certain portions. And that's how this started. But we had communications, and all I can think of is, maybe we should have had more, more people attend the meetings. But I didn't know that. That's why I asked you who the resident group was. Because I don't know anything about these new members. I was told this is the group I'm supposed to talk to. And no one asked me on November 6, was I talking to the right group? So I communicated with the people I knew to communicate with. And Nick gave across-- gave the timeline of everything that we were going to do at that meeting. Now, I understand some people were very boisterous and did not want to hear, but as you say, I couldn't do anything about that, you can't do anything about that either, and if we have another meeting, same thing. Because you're gonna have to invite everybody. There were people there that were-- didn't even live in Rancho del Oro. So even if we did this again, my suspect is gonna be the same group of people.
It was a disaster, and so a lot of what wanted to be communicated did not get communicated or heard. It may have been spoken, but it was certainly not heard. Our concern is that you have a number of people in Rancho del Oro that are totally ignorant about what's going on. They get a letter, and they don't really understand the full ramifications of it, such as the city council was-- had said it previously, that a number of things were going to occur from city council, city's part, and that wasn't part of the presentation at all. So consequently, there was quite an upheaval about what it meant to, to, to give money to the city to, to maintain our properties, when what we were being told was in addition to what we had-- we were gonna be paying for something that the city had remarked that they were-- had said that they were not-- that they were going to do, such as remove all the irrigation, start over again, et cetera. And that was at a city council meeting, so it's on public record. So our concern, back to my, my issue, is we want to be able to educate our folks. Those folks, just like in our city, state, world government people that have opportunity to vote, they sit on their back porch, and, and they don't really educate themselves. They just-- then things go the wrong way as far as the vote. And so we're-- there are gonna be a lot of-- many-- well, I'll leave it at that, but that's why we would like to have another opportunity to under a-- in fact, I would have to lay the, the burden of, of what occurred, no offense, but at your feet, because it's sort of like a football game, like what happened in recent days, if you watch football, Cleveland and stuff. The comment is, the, the team will do what the coach allows, and if the moderator doesn't call everything to a halt and make everything stop, which didn't happen, it was, even, even you folks were trying to talk over what was going on. In fact, I had to call out one of the people that finally did shut up, but it took me to call him out, rather than keep calling on him, and he kept saying again, we're trying to be nice. So I, I just hope that we can have another conversation, because if this letter goes out real, real quick, like this week, then we're done. We're done.
You said that the-- The city was going to tear down--
Can I clarify that?
You, I'm trying to clarify it.
Sure.
You said, the city said that we would repair the irrigation and take down some trees, right?
Replace.
Yeah, repair, replace. Put all new irrigation was the, was, was my recollection of it, and, and--
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Sure.
Okay, I'm done.
Sure.
I'm done. He said I can't talk back to you, so--
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I'm done.
Okay.
When you were-- now, this may not have been heard. What did you say, because you said it, would happen if they voted yes?
If they voted yes, then we'd start the process. The main point of all this is we have actual factual documentation that we--
No. What did you talk about? The maintenance, pulling down trees.
Yeah, so if it goes through, through the LMD, we'll be maintaining the, the two, the private property and the public use property. Part of that would be doing the upgrades. Now, that would be coming out of the fund, not knowing the future of how much money we're going to have by paying the cost. That's something that has to go through.
And again, I'd like to clarify that when you get time.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So before you, Nick, and before current city manager and a lot of staff members here, Daniel, most likely remember this, the reason I wanted to butt into this situation was there was a promise made by the city that is on record. In the last round, Joe McKee and I were in the subcommittee when we met with the group. First, I want to say there is, there is no use to have a public setting with the residents there at this point, because it's gonna end up being a fiasco. Again, we've done four, and they've all been out of control. But there's a lot of good information coming from the Millers here about how the process should go in the future and what the promises were made. The former city manager and the former city council did promise that it would not come out of the funds, that it would come out of general fund, as a good faith that the city would pay for the landscaping, meaning they would pay for the new irrigation and the tree trimming, and the initial work to get done, any trees that needed to be taken out before the initial new landscaping was put in, as a good faith based on what was done in the 90s that was never recorded. That is recorded, and I do think as the mayor and on the former council, we should, we should honor that. Now, it's not something that Nick probably knew at the time. So what I think the question from the group is, for clarification, is that they don't want to see their funds being used for that after the initial cleanup's done by the city. Then those funds would go into effect for the ongoing maintenance to make sure that it was clarified. So, I mean, completed. That was a clarification that I would like to see the council consider tonight, because I do think it was a promise made by the former city council and the former city administration that is recorded, that can be found. None of the other promises that were made in the 90s can be found in any recording anywhere. Not saying that it's not true, it just can't be found to prove. So I think that needs to be clarified tonight. And there also was one other caveat that has not been spoke about, that there was four small parcels, I believe four, that were sliver parcels that were never sucked up by the residential parcels, that are just ridiculous on how this was developed, that the city had committed to purchasing, and I believe one or two had been purchased by the city in lien sales. Do you know anything about those sliver properties?
Would that be 260 and 265?
It could be. It could be. There's, there's sliver properties on, between the right-of-way and the block wall area that were committed that we would purchase as part of the right-of-way to make sure it was in lighting, landscaping, maintenance district, because technically, no one's going to purchase those properties on the other side of the block wall, and they were in lien sales or going to lien sales, and they were to be purchased for like a couple thousand dollars each. It was really inexpensive, and that was another commitment by the city at the time that we would purchase those and make sure they were put into the right-of-way so that it could all be done. Because technically, there's persons of the right-of-way that are being maintained that nobody owns. So again, to make it all work into one, that was from the former committee, and obviously a lot of this didn't get pushed over to the current committee, and I apologize on that. Those are the clarifications I would like to make.
But isn't that what you said?
Yeah, and for clarifying, I did, we did talk about the irrigation during the presentation, because there were, questions were brought up about putting in new plants. Well, you can't plant new plants if there's no water, because they're all gonna die. So the idea would be, one of the first things would be wanting to put in the irrigation. But if it was already brought up, then that's something new.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was clarified so that everybody's on the same page. We're all on the same page, it's gonna look beautiful, it's just how it's being spent, and how it's affecting the current cost analysis on, is it really $35 that would maintain everything, or can we take out that initial cost that's gonna be 30, 50,000, whatever it is, and does it bring that number down, is I think the question that the group was asking.
So on that--
Yeah, we would have to go back and redo the estimates. We won't be able to--
And that's the reason this was, this was led, the very first one was led by the city. This was supposed to be led by the group, and there was some health issues with the current group, and I know the leader of the group kind of put everything back together, and I thought that's the direction it was gonna go. We didn't want the city to lead it, we wanted them to lead it, and basically come up with a, an amount, whether it was 35, 25, 20, you're gonna get what you're gonna get for that amount. The recommendation for the city is $35, so you can get everything you want. But if it's $20, then it's $20. If it's $15, $15. I understand what they're saying, we don't want this to fail. We really don't. So what we want to do is be able to assist. Obviously, I can't get the list, because we found out, we did, we did say if it was, if it was a right, I could get the list, and I could make phone calls to, as the mayor, I was, I was so frustrated with this, I said I would make phone calls to absentee owners to explain the process to them so they understood it, because that was the biggest concern, is absentee owners weren't getting this. But we come to find out it's a private list, so what we could do, in good faith, is write a letter, explain the process, and make sure it gets to the absentee owners. Is that something that could happen, that wouldn't violate the Privacy Act?
I would.
Can you repeat that?
What you're saying is you can't give us a list of names and owners of the home, because that would be privacy, we'd be violating privacy, but could we write a letter in favor, or not in favor, but explaining the process to the absentee owners in more layman terms, not so government terms, and mail it to those people?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay.
Another thing that we can do is, tonight you're approving the preliminary engineer's report. We can reevaluate the cost estimate, as long as we're not increasing it, we can lower it, and then you would approve that rate at the public hearing. However, we would not be able to mail out the ballots on the 20th, which is tomorrow, but we do have until December 6th to mail out the ballots with the correct rate on there.
And that would give the resident group time to be able to get out and start talking about this issue before they receive their ballot. Ms. Pye?
And you, you said that should the vote be yes, that there can be a subcommittee of RDO that can review the plans that are going to go back in.
Yeah, what happened with that was, when we were discussing what this process is, we weren't even, previous discussions were talking about certain plants, different options, stuff like that. One of the gentlemen brought that up. For this discussion, we weren't even talking about that. We were just talking about the process of moving forward to do the annexation, not what's going in there or anything like that. Didn't want to confuse the two. I know in the previous times, we've done that. This time was not that situation. That's why one of the solutions could be, we could develop a committee to talk about that. If we voted-- If we voted, if the vote is yes. If the vote is no, then obviously, it doesn't make a difference.
No, if you vote no, we did also make a promise to the committee that there would be a subcommittee to help with the design landscaping, so...
I think you're done.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Gardner?
No, no, I was going to let you guys vote.
Oh, no, no, I have a couple of questions, if I could, and if I could have our consultant from Webb come up too, because I think this is more your area as well. Our two residents, how they made a very compelling case, and I wanted to just kind of walk through something. I know we all want this to pass, and I know you guys and the bulk of your residents up there do as well. And I want to make sure that you have enough time. Now, on our timeline here, we have the mail of the ballots going out tomorrow, which is, or, yeah, tomorrow, the 20th, and they don't have to be returned until January 21st. Is that how I read the timeline? Does January 21st is when the ballots have to be back and they're counted? My simple high school math tells me that's 62 days. 62 days to get out and knock on some doors and raise a few things? I, you know, that's a lot of time, having run a few campaigns. That's a good deal of time to get out there and do that. Am I miscalculating something here?
No, you're right. I think their issue is, is that if we mail the ballots out tomorrow, people are going to hurry up and return the ballots, and they're not going to have a chance to speak with them.
Yeah, and I get that, and I just wanted to make sure that we, that, but according to the law, as I read it, we have no less than, the ballots have to be out no less than 45 days out, which by my calculation, I think is December 5th?
I thought it was December 7th, but...
Okay, well, again, my high school math is, you know...
We're saying it's 6th, because it's on a Friday, and...
Yeah, and where do we have to count weekends and all of that stuff? So, let's just say December 7th. That's the last day that you can do that. So, we could approve this tonight. You can not hold, you'd hold off not mailing the ballots while we rework the letter, rework the amounts, is that?
Correct.
Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so approving this tonight still keeps us on the timeline, the timeline that we all worked so hard to finalize on this, still keeps our current timeline other than the date of the mailing of the ballots, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was, that was all I had, and just, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for putting me on this subcommittee.
We're here to serve. Mr. Griffith?
I do have a question, because I noticed in there, there's a $10,000 one-time setup fee. Can you explain what that is?
That's our fee for doing this whole process. So, we have to charge it to the property owners. Even though that's setting the max rate, when the city does their budgeting for the following year, that $10,000 will not be included.
Correct.
They have the ability to go up to the max, but if they don't need that amount, they don't need to.
So, in effect, that 331 would probably drop to 292 in the second year?
Possibly, if there's no increase in rates or anything like that.
And, but the increase is limited to 2%, correct?
Correct.
And that 2% would be based on that 292, not that initial 331?
It's actually the, it would be the 331. So, you're setting the max, you're setting the max, it increases by 2%. However, the city doesn't have to levy at the maximum rate.
Okay.
So, right now...
So, the max would go up, but not necessarily the assessed?
What's being levied, correct?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I have nobody else in the queue. Would two and a half weeks be enough for you to get out and do your work? The only reason I'm allowing this, because there's only two of you in the room, and if there was 10 of you...
That makes us feel spatial. Two and a half weeks, I can't answer for the group. Actually, my first wife is more involved in that. But, I do have a side question.
He's been using that joke for years, and these guys just got it.
Well, she is. They're all jealous, forget it. But I have a, can I ask a side, another question?
I've let this thing go.
Why not?
I go out of control, let's go in.
My question has to do with, in the working of this, the, it came up, some of the items contained within the proposed engineer's report slash budget are already covered by the citywide LMD number one. And so, that was a concern of Herb's, that if that's included, you're, we're getting double, you know, double charged. In other words, if it's already being covered by the city, why are we, why is this included in that?
Before you go any further, Nick, can you answer that question, or Danny?
Yeah, the citywide LMD number one is actually a citywide LMD that every single resident, every single property owner pays for, pays for all the park maintenance, the streetlights on the entire city, the entire city itself. And it does pay for maintenance of shoulders, it doesn't pay for irrigation, for trees, for particular development. So, this would be based on a particular development, particular landscaping, specifically to your street lighting on that neighborhood and so forth.
Okay.
So, it won't be a double, this is a standard one that everyone else pays.
Okay, so, thank you for answering that.
Yeah, and we looked into it a few times already with our legal department and with Webb, over and over and over, and it's not, it's not a double charge.
Okay, okay. So, the concern that also we have, since I'm able to do this, is that if this, if this thing's approved, when I was looking at all the background material, or supportive material, things like the $10,000, all that, does that get approved along with it? Since it's supporting material?
You're talking about the engineer's report?
All of the stuff that's on the website, under the agenda item, has a number of supporting documents. Which includes the 331, et cetera.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the budget worksheet. The budget worksheet is part of the engineer's estimate, and like Webb and Associates said, it's a preliminary report, the final report will be approved in a public hearing on the 21st.
Okay, so, so if they get a letter, and they've heard about all this other stuff, that's not part of what you're approving tonight?
It is, this is a preliminary report, this is what's going to get approved, the final report will be on the 21st, which we can send out a letter with the corrected numbers on the 6th, which would have the correct numbers.
So, the numbers could change, you're saying that?
On the 6th, we would have the updated numbers, correct? We wouldn't have the updated numbers tonight, we would have them on the 6th.
But when does the input get opportunity for the citizens to say, well, that number is, is, how did you arrive at that or have that whole discussion? Because you're not going to change it at that point.
Correct.
So, there has to be a conversation before that with the citizens group possibly, the small group.
All the engineer's estimate are based on actual estimates that we receive through contractors, licensed contractors, and that's how we receive the estimates. We follow our procurement procedures that we have always followed, we're going to follow the exact same procedures every year when we do hire the contractor through the city council as well.
And that was a question that came up too, about our, the people that do the maintenance, is that, is that the least expensive that we could get, as far as the actual workers doing the maintenance?
Correct. Yeah, we got four bids, and we actually just awarded, and this is the exact cost, yes.
And to elaborate on that, whenever a bid comes through, we take, we have to go through the public bid process, and the city council most of the time takes the lowest bid unless it looks out of whack.
Anything else, Mrs. Miller?
She's crumbling, so...
Let me, you may have a seat.
I like that, which is... Thank you.
I'm willing to, I want to vote. I'm willing to postpone the letter going out tomorrow. I'm willing to meet with the neighborhood group again, but I, you need, I'm going to need your help, and I'll do the best I can to make sure everybody can hear what Nick is saying. I tried in the beginning of the meeting to just let him give his presentation.
I don't even know if that's necessary at this point. I mean, I know you're putting that olive branch out there, but there's been four or five meetings like this, and nothing's ever changed, so I don't even know if that's going to work. Going door-to-door is going to probably be the best, but if you're, it's your skin on your back, you know, you go for it.
I could tell you, since our meeting, I've been out there eight times to talk to individual residents, and that absolutely is a better way to address it, where you could actually explain things rather than being overtalked. So, I think going to a second meeting like that, or in this case, multiple meetings that we've done it, I don't see it being beneficial. If you need my support, I'm willing to go out there as much as possible if residents have questions.
Okay, and how, the engineer's report is an estimate, but can they receive the information prior to the mailing?
Yeah, we...
Okay, okay. If you can't, you can't, that's fine.
Can the resident group review the letter right before it leaves City Hall, just to make sure we're all on the same page? Would that be a problem?
The final letter would just have the final amount, the final adjusted amount with the actual worksheet, that's not an issue. We'll definitely upload that in our, in our city website, and that would be, that can go along with the letter, so everybody understands the final amount they're voting on, that's not an issue.
Can you, Danny, work with the subcommittee, meaning Mayor Protem, Pye, and Councilor Gardner, and the resident group, to make sure that that letter, everybody understands everything in that letter before it leaves City Hall?
Yes, begin today.
Thank you.
So, that's my motion. Now, I got to...
So, your motion would be to delay mailing the letter and ballot packet until no later than December 7th, giving us time to review the final letter, correct?
Mr. Griffith?
I have a question, because I, I thought we were going to mail a letter out, not the ballots, which I think are the December 6th, or December 5th thing. We were talking about mailing out a letter with an explanation right away, so that you have two weeks before the ballots go out to meet with people, is that correct? So, are we, are we getting the letter confused with the ballots, or are we clear on that?
We didn't include what you just said, and I'll accept your, he will accept your amendment.
So, let me, let me just jot this down one more time here. So, we're going to, I would move then that we approve the agenda item by changing it to where we delay the mail of the ballots to no later than December 7th, and prior to that, we send out a explanatory letter that is drafted by the planning department and...
Layman terms?
Yeah, a clarifying letter. I'm not sure if we can urge acceptance at that point, but we can, we can, we can explain it in very layman terms, and I'll be happy to work with you on that, Danny, and go from there. And then have that sent out before the ballots go out on the 7th, and that still keeps our, leaves our timeline.
And I have one more, I don't know if it's a question or amendment, but the mayor referred to the city's initial cleanup not being included in that project cost, is that correct?
I don't know if this is the proper place to do it, but I would like to make sure that the city council records something on the promise that was made by the former city council and former city administration, which is recorded.
I would like for that to be recorded, and it depends on what the vote is. And so, it will come back during the public hearing. That work?
During the public hearing would be the proper place, most likely, yes.
Yeah. So, Gerald, did you get all of that down?
Does that work for the attorney?
I understand the explanatory letter to be sent out, kind of immediately, then the ballot to be sent out, obviously, within the, not within the 45-day period, outside the 45-day period to comply with Prop. 218. I did not get the very last part.
The promises that were made by the former city council administration, we're going to do in the public hearing, so we don't need to add it to this.
We'll discuss those in the public hearing.
Okay, okay, okay.
On the, on the... On the outcome of the vote.
Okay, so, so nothing with respect to the letter or the ballot, but those issues will then come back?
I want to clarify that with the city manager, and make sure he yells at me about the money I'm spending without his permission. And so, we want to get that all clarified and recorded, because it never has, all these promises have been made, and it's never been recorded, so we'll bring it back during the public hearing process for the city council to make a decision whether they're going to spend that general fund money or not.
Gotcha.
Well, Mr. Mayor, real quick, that is going to impact the number the engineer's report's going to be able to put out, so I need to know, what did we promise back in the day? So, this is not supposed to be part of any of the engineering reports or anything like that, this is supposed to be a separate expenditure by the city council on the initial cleanup, which is the initial cleanup, tree trimming, replacement of dead trees, and replacement of the irrigation system. Including, including the purchases of the forced livers of property, which I believe we've done one, or we're in the process of doing one at one time, which we'll have to get clarification on.
And just to add a note, we will get estimates on that, revise the engineer's estimate, the letter will clarify that portion, that that is included if the vote is yes. And when the vote is yes, if it is yes, then I believe they can do that action on approving that funding, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't going to do this unless it's voted yes on, so...
Correct.
Then, obviously, then we would correct the engineer's report, get all that fund...
Correct, separate.
Separately into the engineer's report, I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see if this is...
Mr. and Mrs. Miller, do you understand what we just did? Are you in agreement with what we just did?
Your first wife. All right.
All right.
So, this is clear as mud. The initial cleanup on the, will actually be brought to the public hearing portion of...
On January 16th.
On January 16th, so...
Okay, and Gerald, the motion looks good, so if you want to bring the screen up again, I'll make that.
I have another question, is that regardless of whether they voted in or not, that initial...
No, it's only if they vote yes.
Okay, it's only if they vote yes, all right. So, we'll work out the language before it comes back to the public hearing? Work it out, don't give me the eyebrow. See if you just listen to me more often. Mr. Griffith, are you back in?
No.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, Mrs. Miller, it's passed, Mr. Miller's bedtime, please take him home. We're in recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
I don't want to talk to anybody. I heard a school judged. And, uh, so, that is, they have that one wall, you see that one wall? But, for that wall, I guess it's not a lot of, yeah, like how that happened, yeah. Yeah, well, we actually, maybe bring it up a little bit higher, so it's more bright, because that's the wall they want to use, doesn't it? More, so, yeah. But, uh, yeah. It's gonna get painted, the color, for the city, and, yeah, the, 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 the wall, yeah, so that one's, uh, that overlay, yeah, that one's, yeah, again, I told them, this is the city manager, on the custom artwork, for the, uh, yeah, where that wall is, the one that, it's like, 37, that's in the office, and that one's, and then the guy, the skeleton, yeah. Yeah, we had a guy get my, and he said, oh, no, we need, uh, the brick, and I was, I was like, oh, just forget it, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, we'll do the thing, and then we'll, then we'll come back.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
That's how I found out it was wrong.
Yeah.
I don't even know what color did the city pick.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
That's how I found out it was wrong.
Yeah.
I don't even know what color did the city pick.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
I found out, I was playing a ring around the Rosie today.
Thank you.
Good night, Mayor.
Oh, no.
Good night, Dan.
Get out of here.
We just got it done.
You were going to play the quarter show and I'm like, oh, you got that.
I'm interrupting you.
I'm not interrupting you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not, it's not.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And so, yeah.
I'm interrupting you.
I appreciate you asking.
I'm good.
Good night, Dan.
Get out of here.
We just got it done.
You were going to play the quarter show and I'm like, oh, you got that.
I'm interrupting you.
I'm interrupting you.
I'm sorry.
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 Can I get everybody back to the dais?
I can, there's a rope in the way.
He's not doing the other stuff, which is really good. Do you want to bring roosters up now? Okay, we need to have a roll call again.
We're going to get back in order, if that's okay, we'll get you up here, use your brain a little bit before you get out of here. All right, we're going to go back to the public hearings, item number five, an ordinance amending the table 17.08-02 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code titled Residential Development Standards. Ms. Deming?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On November 6, 2019, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed ordinance. This ordinance amends Chapter 17.08.030 of the Municipal Code regulating the residential land use district standards. These standards are contained within Table 17.08.02. The proposed ordinance seeks to amend parts of the table to add setback regulations for substandard lots in the RM, residential medium density zone, and clarifications for the RVS, residential visitor serving standards. There is a chart shown in the staff report, the items in bold are the added items to the chart, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with this, and give kudos to staff for developing this. As we've gone around the city, there's quite a few vacant and empty lots, not just those in certain subdivision stuff, but also scattered throughout the city in the non-developed areas, that are very difficult to build houses on that comply with our setback standards and a few other things. So, rather than have a hard and fast rule that says you have to do this, you have to do that, we're giving staff some flexibility here that will allow them to say, all right, you can't do a 10-foot setback, otherwise you couldn't build a house there, but you could do an eight-and-a-half-foot setback and get a nice house in there. So we're giving them the flexibility to make these adjustments without having to bring them to council, without having to go too far out of the realm of our code, and giving them the flexibility that we need. I thought this was great outside of the box thinking in order to work with a certain developer, and I see applications for it all over the city, and it will help us build some low-income housing, low-cost housing in the areas, in some of these small interior lots in the city where you really couldn't put a house because of the setback regulations. So, I like this a lot, and I would want to commend staff for doing a great job on putting this together, and the Planning Commission for recommending it, and I would suggest to my fellow council members that we also approve it.
Mr. Betts?
Why'd you remember all that, my conversation with staff? But my understanding is we're simply clarifying the setbacks on substandard lots that are 50 to 79 feet wide, where people have difficulty building. Is that, am I correct in that? We had a meeting on this, and I just want to make sure that I'm hearing what I heard in that meeting.
We are adding reduced setbacks for substandard lots, so that way they are not required to meet the 10-foot setback if they have a substandard or small lot.
And so the 10-foot setback is on the side, correct?
That is correct.
And so that would mean you'd have two 5-foot setbacks instead of two 10, so instead of the houses being 20 feet apart, they could be 10 feet apart.
Correct.
Okay, and I have experience with that, growing up with houses that I grew up in in Los Angeles, and I could, when I was young and spry, I could jump from one rooftop to the next, so it gets to be pretty close. But all that goes through staff review, and also, I presume, when houses or developments come through, the Planning Commission review also, correct?
It goes to the Planning Commission if it is above a certain number of units.
Okay.
A single infill, single family is done at the staff level.
Okay, and then also, I didn't see anything in here that caused a problem for driveways, they stay the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess, I think I was, you know, not disagreeing with you, I just didn't hear all that, as far as, when I went for the explanation with them, I'm just looking at the standards to see if this is going to cause any kinds of problems. So I really appreciate the time you spent with me before the council meeting, so I can understand it, and I'm comfortable with this, I'd be willing to make a motion if-
If nobody else in the queue, I have to open the public hearing first before you can make a motion.
That's a good idea, huh?
I'll open the public hearing at this time and take testimony in favor. I'll take testimony opposed. I'll take any testimony in neutral position. I will close the public hearing at this time, any more discussion by the City Council? Mr. Betts, are you back in?
Yeah, for the purpose of making a motion?
Go ahead.
An ordinance, a motion to amend Table 17-08-02 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code titled Residential Development Standards as appears on, is that packet, page 83? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. All right, there's a motion coming up on the board there, the maker of the motion is Mr. Betts, the second of the motion is Mr. Griffith. Any more discussion? Please vote. Do you have the first reading?
The residential median density, residential mobile home, residential high density, and residential visitor serving zones, and clarifying notes thereof, the ordinance will return on December 3rd for second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Item number six is an ordinance amending Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 12.04 regarding camping restrictions, Mrs. Archuleta, that was tough, man, I was going to give you all kinds of titles there.
In April of 2019, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal published an amended opinion in the case of Martin versus the City of Boise. The case established new restrictions regarding regulations against sitting, lying, and sleeping in public places. The Ninth Circuit held that the Eighth Amendment prohibits the imposition of criminal penalties for sitting, sleeping, or lying outside on public property for homeless individuals who cannot obtain shelter. Prior to the decision, the city enacted an ordinance creating regulations for camping. The ordinance, Chapter 12.04 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, regulates overnight camping and storage of personal property in public places. Camping regulations affect sitting, lying, or sleeping in public places, and may affect homeless persons. As such, Chapter 12.4 requires an update to remain consistent with the development in law. The principal change in the proposed ordinance is to remove all criminal penalties for any violations of that chapter. violations of that chapter. Criminal penalties are likely unenforceable per the Martin versus the City of Boise decision. However, all civil and equitable remedies remain in place. If the proposed ordinance is enacted, the city will be able to clean areas affected by unlawful camping and storage of property. This will reduce blight and address community concerns about excessive trash and dumping. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Ms. Pye?
If it's private property, do they have to have any type of signage, yeah, signage?
Signage.
Thank you, that they do not want camping?
Private property?
Mm-hmm.
No, I mean, that would go to like a no trespassing type of situation, I would assume. Yeah.
Okay, my next question, I'm going to give to the city manager. It says fiscal impact is none.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, but I think the fiscal impact saying "none" was because we were changing the ordinance, not specifically what it would take for us to spend the money and time to, because we have no idea exactly what that would be. And I don't know if you would currently take it out of your current budget, or if it'd be something that we'd have to add to it in the future.
So we have produced a draft kind of guidelines for personal property removal that works with the Public Works Departments and the Police Department, so that's something we'd have to, we'd have to create an internal policy for. So there could, there could be costs associated with that, of course.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nobody else in the queue at this time. I'll open the public hearing. I'll take any testimony in favor. I'll take any testimony opposed. I'll take any testimony in neutral position. Seeing no one coming forth, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll take any more discussion by city council. I entertain a motion. There's a motion by Mr. Gardner, a second by Ms. Pye. No more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is first reading of an ordinance of the city council amending Chapter 12.04 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding camping restrictions. The ordinance will return on December 3rd for second reading and adoption.
Item number seven is an ordinance amending Title VI of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to prohibit roosters within city limits. Chief Henson.
Mayor, city council. When Animal Care and Control Services was established in March of 2018, Title VI of the Riverside County Code was adopted for providing animal services within city limits, specifically Chapter 6.05 allowing for crowing roosters. It allows for up to six roosters to be kept at a residence without any restrictions. If seven or more are kept at a residence, they need to be housed in an acoustical structure from sunset to sunrise. This specific ordinance has raised complaints from residents within our community due to the noise caused by the roosters. Along with the noise that the roosters make, there are health and sanitation issues. This creates a public nuisance and disturbance, and disturbs the comfort, peace, and enjoyment of neighbors. This can also have a negative impact of values on nearby properties and the quality of life in our community. Another aspect that needs to be addressed with keeping roosters within city limits is the possibility of illegal cockfighting. Animal Care and Control has picked up a dead rooster who had a spur attached to the leg. This is a sign that we do have cockfighting in the area. This type of spur is associated with cockfighting. Cockfighting also leads to illegal gambling operations and other crimes. By amending the above titled section to read, it shall be unlawful for any person to keep or cause to be kept or to have in his or her possession or under his custody or control within city limits any roosters. This amended ordinance is for the best practice for public health, safety, and well for the community, and there's no fiscal impact.
All right, any questions? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Henson, a couple of just quick questions on this one. How does ACC plan on enforcing this? Are you, are you planning to just go out and scan? Are you waiting for residents to complain?
As far as I understand, with respect to animal control, it would be done on a complaint basis.
Okay. And what does this, this doesn't affect anybody that happens to have laying hens?
Correct. It does not.
Just, just with roosters on this stuff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The, it's ironic that this one is coming before us today. I had a resident bump into him while I was walking my dog earlier this week and said, "What about these roosters? I've got three of them in my neighborhood, and I do, 5:00 in the morning. If the dog doesn't wake me up, the roosters do." And he, he was asking if we were going to do anything. I said, "Oh, I'll look into it." And lo and behold, we are. So I am really happy to see this, and I appreciate you bringing it before us. Thanks.
Be a hero really fast, that's good.
Yeah, I know. I love to take credit for it.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, if there was complaints that we get, it's the roosters. I get a bunch of them, had a bunch of them over the years. Before we went to our own animal control, there was a system with code enforcement working with Riverside County to where they were able to effect the removal of the roosters. I don't know what they were doing or how they were doing it, but it was, the system was working. And I think we, I counted five roosters that were baited. And then we ended up being our own animal control, and we had to go back to doing this. Imagine there's some people that have a rooster that are going to be sad that they don't have one, but in a neighborhood where you've got, I can't imagine, I mean, three roosters going off all at once, but people want to sleep, and you know, there's a place you can go buy a farm or go live on a farm if you want to have a farm animal. So I'm all in favor of this one.
All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. I'll take public testimony in favor of this item.
Ted Maroff in Desert Hot Springs. I had some roosters and some chickens here in the city limits. The only reason why you need a rooster is to make their eggs fertile. The hens will still lay eggs without the rooster. And yes, there is problems throughout the valley with cockfighting, and we go to the feed stores, and you ask questions, "Well, why does that guy need that? And why is there, you know, their cabinets are locked up?" And you hear the employee say, "Well, yeah, there's people coming here all the time getting that stuff, and they're probably doing the cockfighting." So it's everywhere, but yeah, you don't need a rooster. Make great watchdogs, but they really not need it. You can still have the hens, still have your chickens, your eggs.
Thank you. Anybody opposed to this item? Would like to speak? Anyone in neutral position would like to speak? I'll close the public hearing at this time. I'll take any more discussion. I see nobody in the queue. I entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the ordinance.
Second. There's a motion, a second on the table. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council amending Section 6.04.020 and deleting Chapter 6.05, crowing roosters of county code Title VI, animals generally, which is incorporated by reference into the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code pertaining to the banning of roosters within the city. The ordinance will return on December 3rd for second reading and adoption.
Thank you. With the administrative calendar, item number eight, award construction contract for the Palm Drive Street Lighting and Safety Improvement Project, city project number 2017-14. Mr. Betts?
Mr. Mayor, there's a rule that if you have a financial interest within 500 feet of significant public improvement, that you have to recuse. I thought originally I wouldn't have to on this one, but it's, it's like 498 feet, so it's a couple of feet there within the guidelines. So an abundance of caution, I will recuse and leave the room.
Thank you. As soon as he's off the dais, Mr. Porras, you can begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2017, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Committee approved $10 million in regional funding for projects that directly address bicycle and pedestrian accident and fatalities in the Coachella Valley. The city applied for that funding, and the Palm Drive Signals and Street Light Project was awarded up to $2,274,000, and included the installation of 24 new streetlights, traffic signal synchronization, the completion of traffic signal warrants at five intersection, and the installation of those traffic signals. In effort to address immediate safety concerns and complete the project in a timely manner, the project was separated into three phases. The first phase was the construction of the traffic signal at Palm Drive and Camina Ventura. That project was completed in August of 2019. The second phase was the traffic signal at Palm Drive and Desert View, and the traffic signal at Pearson and Choya. That construction started in October of 2019. And the third phase, which is a project we're discussing tonight, is the Palm Drive Street Light Project, which goes from Palm Drive to Two Bunch Palms Trail, along Palm Drive from Two Bunch Palms Trail to Pearson Boulevard. The Palm Drive Street Light and Safety Improvement Project includes the construction of 24 new streetlights, the associated electrical system, the installation of additional conduit for future fiber connection, and traffic signal synchronization, a combination of floor reconstruction and road surface rehab of asphalt, and new striping, including narrow driver lanes and new bike lanes with green markings and crosswalks. On October 16, 2019, the request for bid proposals for construction of the project was released. The notice somebody bids was posted on city website, in the local newspaper, and with Planner Graphics, a local valley clearinghouse for public bid solicitations. The RFP was released for 27 days, and on November 12, the following bids were received and opened. There was three bids that were received. There was Onyx Paving Company Incorporated, All American Asphalt, and TriStar Contracting to Incorporated. Staff reviewed all the bids and verified all submitted and documentation. Staff found that three errors in the bid proposal form from the apparent low bidder Onyx Paving, Inc. Two required bid items were listed as zero, which in turn resulted the total bid amount to be summed and presented incorrectly in the bid proposal form. Based on these errors, the apparent low bidder was found to be non-responsive, and Shabri rejected it as non-responsive. Thereby, the second lowest bidder from All American Asphalt should be selected as a lowest responsive qualifier bidder. Staff reviewed the bids and verified all submitted, determined the lowest responsible bidder to be All American Asphalt with a total bid amount of $2,099,222. Staff is recommending that council take the following actions. One, reject the apparent low bid from Onyx Paving Incorporated as non-responsive. Award the construction agreement, sorry, number two, award deconstruction agreement to the lowest responsible bidder, All American Asphalt. And three, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement binding between All American Asphalt and the City of Desert Hot Springs for the construction of Palm Drive and Street Light and Safety Improvement Project, city project number 2017-14, in the amount of $2,099,222, and approve a contingency amount of 10%, which is $209,922.20. Also approve as needed inspection services of $60,000, as needed material testing of $15,000, and an SCE streetlight fee of $100,000, which brings the total construction budget to $2,484,144.20. On your packet, you'll also find the project plans, the lowest bid from All American Asphalt, the non-responsive bid from Onyx Paving, the notice somebody bids, and the final bid item tabulation table. That concludes my staff report. I'd gladly answer any questions.
I have nobody in the queue right now. Does anybody like to speak to, ask any questions? Not open public, I'll open the public comments. Nobody coming forth? Close public comments, go back to city council. What's your wishes? There is a motion and a second. Motion by Pye, seconded by Griffith. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Someone call Mr. Betts back in the room? Item number 10 is a purchase of public works heavy equipment. Mr. Porras?
Nick Hacker, Public Works Manager, will be presenting this item.
Thanks.
So this item regards the purchase of new public works heavy equipment. Run through the PowerPoint real quick. The California Air Resource Board, which is CARB, the State of California Air Resource Board issued regulations to reduce emissions of oxidized nitrogen and particulate matter. On January 1st, 2020, the city's diesel-heavy equipment fleet will be in violation of two of these regulations. First one is the off-road diesel fuel fleet regulations, and the second one is the truck and bus regulations. The off-road diesel fuel fleet regulations, all self-propelled off-road diesel vehicles 25 horsepower or greater used in California, and most, and most two-engine vehicles are subject to regulations for in-use of off-road diesel-fueled fleet. These are the limitations here. We need a limit on idling, all vehicles to report to ARB and labeled. Restrictions adding, or restrict adding older vehicles into fleets starting on January 1st, 2014. Requiring fleet to reduce the emissions by retiring, replacing, or repowering older engines, or installing verified diesel emission control strategies. And then just the website. The truck and bus regulations is necessary to meet the federal attendant standards. The regulations require heavy-duty diesel vehicles that operate in California to reduce toxic air emissions from the exhaust. Diesel exhaust is responsible for 70% of the cancer risk from airborne toxins, toxics affected. So this is going to run through everything that's the regulation. The way the regulations will work is off the weight of the vehicles. I'll continue through all the regulation, or all the regulations for those explained in it, and when we have to have it replaced. And again, it's through the website explains it all. And this, now I'll go into how it affects our fleet. So this is our current front loader. It was built in 1995. It's a John Deere. It's a 544G loader. It has 125 horsepower. This will be non-compliance with CARB's off-road regulations. This is our skip loader with the Gannon. It's a 2006 John Deere. It's a 210 LE. It's 84.5 horsepower, and it's going to be non-compliant with CARB off-road regulations. This is our water truck. It's a 1994. It's an F-700. Its gross weight is 24.5 pound, or 24,500 pounds. It's going to be in non-compliance with the CARB truck and bus regulations. This is our dump truck. It's a 1990 Ford, F-700. Its gross weight is 20,000 pounds, and it'll make it non-compliant with the new CARB truck and bus regulations. Our bucket truck, or our lift truck, boom truck, it's a 1999 Ford. It's an F-350. Its gross weight is 9,900 pounds. It'll be non-compliant with the CARB truck and bus regulations. The equipment that we're proposing is the front loader. It's a CAT 2019. That's a 926M wheel loader. It's Tier 4 Final Stage compliant, and it comes with a 12-month full machine warranty, 36-month, or 2,000-hour premium warranty. This is the replacement for, the replacement for the front loader with the Gannon. It's a 2019 CAT. It's 415F2L, IL back loader, or backhoe loader. It's a Tier 4 Final Stage compliant. It's 12-month full machine warranty. It's 36 months, 2,000-hour premium warranty. Replacing the water truck to lower our emissions and having less requirements for the city for keeping our employees with their Class B registration, which costs us for medical. We opted, since it's not, we evaluated how often we use that truck. We don't use it that often, so we opted to do a tow-behind water wagon. It's a 2019 DOT-approved trailer. It holds 1,025 gallons. It has a pump, which is with a four-horsepower Honda engine, and it has a 25, 25-foot-long 1.5-inch fire hose with nozzle. There's no CARB regulations. Then we have the dump truck. It's a 2019 Ford, F-650. It's a 4x2. I don't even know how to pronounce that, that name for the dump body. It's a Tier 4 stage, or it's a Tier 4 Final Stage compliant. We have our bucket truck. It's a 2019 Altek. It's an AT37G. It has articulating telescope, an articular device. It's a 42.5-inch high insulated bucket, and it's a Tier 4 Final Stage compliance. Staff has looked at different options to comply with the regulations, and purchasing of the new equipment was the best option. Money spent towards equipment that was up to 24 years old would be thrown in good money after bad. On August 21st, sorry, August, yeah, August 21st, 2018, the city council approved the general fund reserve for federal operational and capital use. The reserve was established as 5% of the general fund budgeted operational appropriations to provide funding for a future operational and capital use such as equipment replacement. The current balance of the reserve for future operational and capital use is $955,954. Staff is recommending the authorization to purchase new public works heavy equipment replacement, non-compliant diesel-heavy equipment, in the amount not to exceed $482,334.07, and appropriate $482, sorry, $482,334.07 in spending authority from the general fund balance reserve for future operational and capital use for this one-time purchase of new heavy equipment. That's my presentation. I'm happy I answered any questions.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, when I first saw this agenda item, I went on the hunt saying, "Oh, we can save that old equipment." And I start looking into their quality, whether California Resources Board requirements, and you start talking about, now you got to swap out engines to get more compliant. You go on YouTube, look at some of the videos. There's one there where the guy's really good. And, you know, the conclusion is, and then you notice the year of the vehicle, 1990, and you're going, "This thing's 20 years old." And so, I don't know if it makes any difference to the rest of you, but I'm satisfied that, you know, by the time you put a new engine in a 1990 vehicle, you're going to have all kinds of other issues going on with it. In another day, and maybe even another state, these vehicles could probably keep going for another 20 years, but this is California, and it's not going to be allowed. My question along those lines is, what's California Air Resources Board going to do next? They're going to say that these vehicles are no longer compliant? You know, diesel is a big no-no in the state of California. They're talking about even CNG is a problem down at Sunline. They're going to all hydrogen on the buses. If we look to see what's going to happen with the regulations coming down the road, we're going to buy these things and then have to make them obsolete again?
So this is Tier 4, which is the highest class, so it's the highest regulation, the newest, best, everything.
I know, but that doesn't make any difference as a state, does it?
Well, I mean, I can't control what the state does. We have to abide by what their policies are.
Okay, but I mean, it's anyhow, so that's my concern. Is there any other engine types out there that can be put in these vehicles that Air Resources Board would consider much more favorable than diesel? Is there other options out there?
Well, the problem is the horsepower. That's why they have the regulations of the 25 or greater. So we have, we have to have that horsepower to draw three tons, five tons, something like that.
Okay.
So hydrogen won't be able to get us, as far as I know, hydrogen won't be able to get us...
Yeah, I don't think it's a practical solution right now at this point either, but I'm just, anyhow, I'm worried about what CARB's going to do. Okay, thank you.
Surplus of the old vehicles, what do we do with those?
So part of the pricing for the two CATs, the loader and the skip loader, CAT is willing to purchase the price off of the valuation when they looked at it, and when they bring the new one, they'll take that one and sell it for us, which actually works to our benefit because with California regulations, we're going to have trouble trying to sell these vehicles.
We're selling them in Arizona, right?
The problem with that is, is probably going to be going federal, which means it'll have to go to another country, which is going to cost us to ship it, which now means, if we were gaining 10,000 to ship it, we might be only gaining a couple thousand out.
That was my worry. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't stored in the city yard for the next 20 years, because we can't get rid of it, but if CAT's taking them back, that's even better. Awesome. Okay, nobody else in the queue? Is there any public comments on this? See nobody. City council, what's your desires?
I move we approve.
There's a motion and a second on the table. I see no one else in there to talk. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing application for California State Bill 2, SP 2, Planning Grants Program Fund. Ms. Demme?
Thank you. Staff is requesting this resolution as it's a requirement to apply for grant funds. The city's eligible to, for a possible $160,000. So we're asking for this resolution so that we can apply and try and get some money. Thank you.
Anybody would like to make any public comments on this item? All right. Approve of staff recommendation. There's a second by Mr. Gardner, or Mr. Betts got in there, and please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our last item tonight is item number twelve, recommendation for the policy rules and regulations the City Council Subcommittee Regarding Adoption of the City Council and Commission Guidelines and Procedures Guidelines. Two ordinances pertaining to the City Council. Councilmember Gardner and Pi were assigned to this committee, and they have a update with recommendations. Who would like to lead?
Mr. Gardner is the lead.
Thank you. The, the report in the packet is pretty well self-explanatory. I wanted to just add a couple of things to it. Councilmember Pi and I took on this project at the mayor's request as our council. Policies and procedures were out of date with current practices, and we found it was much easier to just rewrite the entire set of policies rather than do strikeouts and additions. So working with our wonderful city attorney, we did a lot of cleanup, things like where our meetings are held, the order of the agenda, things like that. We took out redundant and unusual sections, or unused sections, I should say, and made it easier to read, I hope, added some new best practices that have been recommended by the California League of Cities, and it should be clearer and easier to understand now. And as part of that, we also looked into reviewing a couple of our ordinances. Two ordinances that are part of this are two that are related to our policies and procedures. First, we cleaned up the council vacancy section and removed a provision giving a council seat automatically to the third-place finisher in an election if a vacancy occurs within the first four months of an election, and made our ordinance mirror the California Government Code requirements for filling a council vacancy. We could find no other city that had any provision with that third-place finisher in it. Second, the state adopted campaign contribution limits for municipal elections starting in January of twenty-one, and those are enforced by the FPPC, a violation of which is a misdemeanor. Our current campaign finance ordinance doesn't have any such provision as that. We also repeal our president ordinance, which has no enforcement mechanism or body to enforce it. Violations under the new, well, regular, the new regulation are a misdemeanor. Under our old ordinance, a contribution of above five hundred dollars would merely require a recusal, such as I had to do this, this meeting at one of our agenda items, and the contribution isn't prohibited in its entirety. Unlike the new state regulations, which were adopted, the campaign contribution limit, it, if you take a contribution above the, the limit, it's completely prohibited. So there's no recusal, that you just can't even take it at all. It's a misdemeanor if you do. No other city in Riverside County has any contribution limits, and now all of our municipal elections across the state will have the same limit imposed, brings us in line with that. It was a lot of work by Councilmember Pi and myself and our city attorney, and I want to thank her for all of her hard work in getting this all put to form and dotting the i's and crossing the t's. That's all I have.
Ms. Pi, anything to add?
I just wanted to add a little insight on the third, a council member being appointed because they, what is it, sixty, sixty days?
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to tell the people how it happened. It happened in ninety-nine. I, I was on the council, no, I applied for the council. There were ten of us. One person had the next highest vote. And there was a person, Elizabeth Donnelly, who was upset with the vote. I, I won the appointment, and so the very next meeting, she changed, changed it to the new position. The only, the only thing that happened because of that was when I was appointed, when you were appointed mayor. And so I just wanted to say, that's how it started, and then that's how it happened. And besides that, Elizabeth and I have been friends for nineteen years before she was deceased. That's it.
Well, I want to say, great work, guys, clearing things up. I mean, it just, it, it seems to be more simple, so, I mean, I like, I like what you came up with. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, the, you know, you go back to prior councils and the effort that was put in place. It was to, in response to a decision by the Supreme Court, Citizens United, in which people could make all kinds of campaign contributions and then step up the podium with business before the city, and the people who they made campaign contributions to could go ahead and vote on them. And a prior council thought that maybe that wasn't the best system, but the Supreme Court was saying you couldn't restrict somebody's free speech rights. There, they had the free speech right to make that contribution. So what the council, prior council did, and the old policy codified was, or the, the present policy codified, was that you can have, you can have as much free speech as you want, contribute as much as you want to, but if you have any business before the city, and you've contributed to anybody's campaign, don't expect that that person is going to be able to vote on your item. So you got a project, and you contribute a bunch of money to a council member, that council member has to recuse. That's our present policy before we go and change this. Now, the state is trying to, I guess, deal with influence of money and campaigns. That's their intent. And they said, well, we're going to handle that by restricting contributions to three thousand dollars, which in a city council race is just about any amount of money you would get from somebody. They had, they didn't take at all the approach that our city did. They let the money, you know, so somebody can help this podium, having contributed three thousand dollars to me or anybody else up here, and then I can go ahead and vote on that. So that's what we're changing. We're going from a system that's very pure, takes out all the influence of money, guarantees free speech rights, and at the same time, anyhow, eliminates any possibility that there's some influence. So I'm obviously, since I consider that a big victory, and it doesn't matter to me that the rest of the cities in California have it wrong, that we got it right is what's critical to me. And so I, I think the influence of money on the political process is such that I think the present restriction is much better. Now, so we're going with state law, but it is significantly relaxing the standard. Now, we did go through one relaxation. Before, it was five hundred dollars, and I think we bumped it up to a thousand. There, there was a change.
It was two fifty, then you bumped it to five hundred?
Yeah, it's two fifty, then it went to five hundred. So anyhow, the, so we are significantly relaxing with this. If this passes, which I suspect it will, we're significantly relaxing that. Now, if I understand it correctly, and I may have read it wrong, but the Fair Political Practices Commission says you can go with one of two ways. You can go with your own, and in that case, the fair, the state said you can go with your own, and in that case, the Fair Political Practices Commission will be the enforcement mechanism, or you can go with this one that's a state in which they will enact it. The only difference is if I'm running and somebody wants to give me five or ten thousand dollars, I can accept that under the previous, under the existing system. I can't go accept that under the new system. I'm limited to three thousand. So with this, it's a big, significant change. I hope I've explained the change clearly. So it's, I don't agree with it. I, I like the old system better. I think it's clean, it's good, it's very good. The second part of this was pertaining to vacancies and the appointment of a temporary council member. And the old standard was, or the existing policy is, that if you're within, let's say, how many days? Twenty days of an election, and there's a vacancy, then you go to the will of the voters, which will be the next highest vote getter, and that's who will take the seat. Because you're so close to an election, and so close to a very strong indication of the electorate of who you wanted to serve up here, that you would just defer to that, and it would not be in the council's hands. In a past a certain deadline, I'm sorry, I don't have it in my head what the deadlines are, past a certain deadline, you say, you know what, so much time has passed, that vote's no longer indicative of how the process should work. There's not enough time to go through a process, just like we did when we appointed a very good council member here, Robert. The, the, we said that that's the fair way to go, so, and I also favor that. I, I have believed for a long time, and still do, that if you're close enough to a most recent election, that the person who the voter said should be the next in line should get it, rather than five of us deciding. So my vote on this will be no. The only, the question I had is, there was some indication that we'd changed other sections of some policies that we've worked on that have become practices here, and I went through this. I only saw these two. I didn't see any strike-throughs or highlights of any past policies, so what, really wasn't clear what changed in, in what we have here. So I'm just going to go on faith that there's nothing super significant, that the two significant ones are these, and that there's, the other stuff is just minor. Am I safe in that one? And since I'm going to vote no anyhow, it don't matter if there's something there major because I just didn't pick up on it.
Sure, and if you want, I could clarify some of the, the guidelines. Basically, we, most of what we did with the guidelines is just, it reiterated so much of the Brown Act that frankly, if the Brown Act changes, which every now and again it does, we just pretty much defer to state law, and that was, I would say, about ninety percent of the guidelines, and just kind of cleaned up the rest of the guidelines. So with respect to the guidelines, it was pretty much the Brown Act, call for special meetings, emergency meetings, that kind of thing.
And I trust your work enough to know that if there was something super significant, it would be called out just as it was here.
Yes, correct, definitely.
So thank you for that. Appreciate that. So anyhow, for those reasons, because I like the way it is now, I will be voting no on this item.
So for sake of a good debate, I've been very boisterous about the restrictions that were put on the council as pretty much it was political. It had nothing to do with making the city more transparent. There was no teeth behind the fact that the city council, or former city councils had voted for the two hundred and fifty-dollar restriction. It was clearly political at the time. The two hundred and fifty-dollar restriction was so that no one could come and give you more than two hundred and fifty dollars, come to the podium and have you vote on their project. You had, you had to recuse yourself. That was relaxed when the next subcommittee, a couple of years later, looked at it, and it was relaxed to five hundred dollars. Again, with no teeth, the worst thing that could happen to somebody, if I took a thousand dollars from somebody and voted on their project and was called out on it, the worst thing that could happen to me was a sanction by the city council, meaning removing me from committees and commissions. At one point, when the first ordnance, or change was made for the two hundred and fifty dollars, it was removal of your seat, which is illegal and against the law. Only you, the people, can remove anyone from this council, council, or the, or, I guess, by law you can be removed, but there's no, no teeth in this city council or administration removing anybody from the city council. So again, it was all political. It had no teeth behind it. This clarifies it, that we've, we are going to focus on what the FPPC will have to make a ruling on if you take over three thousand dollars, and I agree with this at this point. At the local level, any, and the big worry from a former council member, which I appreciated his, his comments at the time, was that what if the cannabis industry exploded in our city and decided to go out and buy someone into the city council, give you ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to run your campaign, and you vote for our projects and make sure the cannabis industry is big? That was a big argument at the time, and it made a little bit of sense. What you guys found with the state regulation makes a lot of sense, and I think we should follow that. That does have teeth in it. That does have ramifications if you do take more than three thousand dollars, and it does hold people accountable for the campaign contributions that they'll receive in the future. Without that, it's just a political, people run around the city saying, you took too much money, you voted on a project you shouldn't have. There's really no teeth to, to do anything with that. The other issue with the council seat that we saw in the past was that third-place vote getter. When it comes down to politics, it is up to the people. And I understand third place, yeah, maybe they should get it, but they've received third place for a reason. And I should give the council a choice to appoint and/or let the people decide at that point if that third-place vote getter was reason they became in third place and not second or first place, and allow them to be, another election to happen. So I'm happy with the way it was rewritten. I think it makes it more clarified, and I think it puts better standards.
Sure. And I'm going to own the existing policy because I worked on that with former councilmember Joe McKee, pushed real hard to get that through, and, you know, I could certainly appreciate other people wanting to take a different course from, you know, a different view. I don't just begrudge anybody that, but just on principle, there was nothing that was just politically motivated about this. It might have appeared at the time, but it certainly was not a political motivation in this. It was purely just to keep the total influence of money out of politics and to guarantee the free speech rights of anybody that wanted to make a contribution, make as much free speech as you want, but you're not going to buy influence. That was the intent and the guiding spirit. So anyhow, I just want to clarify that, you know, we're undoing what I fought really hard to get through, and I'm not going to vote yes to undo it, so that's it.
Well, we'll agree to disagree on that. Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I know you guys did a lot of work on this. I appreciate that. As far as the, the campaign contributions, I think matching to the state is a good idea. Maybe we have a choice now. What I see every time we're up here is we are amending parts of our code, our ordinances, because the state has passed something new, which was the camping issue, just last, last council meeting, I believe, was micro kitchens or micro enterprise kitchens. So every time we're here, there's another state change that we have to change all of our stuff to go ahead and comply with the state. So if this is what the state, the option with the state is, I would prefer we just go ahead and do that and not have to come back here and then go through this process again to match the state, so.
Just quickly, don't take this the wrong way. I appreciate your comments. I, I got the same gripe about the state too, and I know that's the, the spirit in which you meant it, but we need to tell the state to knock this stuff off, just as an editorial here. I mean, we're perfectly capable of running our city, and they sure seem to be changing things and messing it up. So anyhow, sorry, I just had to get that in.
All right, nobody else in the queue? Is there any public comments? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Brett Anderson, Master Raj. This is one of the reasons I came up tonight. I got to review the campaign portion of this. I'm really not informed enough to even speak about it, but definitely the, the appointments of the council member vacancies, I, I've, I didn't know Mr. Betts was involved in that, but I, I, I didn't see a rewrite. I just saw, saw stuff being striked out, and I, I, I thought it was well-written and, and thought out, and, and just to take away the special election process and, and having the authority to appoint a fellow council member, I think is, doesn't serve the city, doesn't serve the residents. And that's why I came up tonight to talk about that, and, and because special districts, I'm going to segue a little bit, but their appointments, like the Palm Springs Cemetery District, I don't even know if they call that anywhere, but, and definitely the vector control, all appointed trustees, and, and as a citizen, there's no representation that I have at that, but also to have a city council appoint fellow council members and not have a special election in a timely process. Of course, you can appoint somebody in the timeframe that that would take place, but I, I would be opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Close public comments? What would the council like to do at this time?
I move that we adopt the recommendation from the Policy Rules and Regulations Subcommittee.
There's a motion, a second, any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed. This action is adopting the resolution, adopting the meeting guidelines and procedures policy that goes into effect immediately. The first ordinance is a first reading of an ordinance amending section two-point-two-zero, point-one-two-five, disclosure of campaign contributions of the municipal codes provide that all persons accepting and/or providing campaign contributions must comply with all applicable state law and Fair Political Practices Commission regulations. Second ordinance is, for first reading, is amending section two-point-oh-four, point-oh-four-zero of the municipal code pertaining to vacancies and the appointment of a temporary city council member. Both ordinances will return on December third for second reading and adoption.
All right, public comments? Anyone at the beginning of the meeting didn't get a chance to speak? All right, we're done. Public comments? Yes, ma'am? Oh, just for clarification on our meeting schedule, the next meeting will be December third. That'll be a regular meeting here at six PM here at the City Council Chambers, Planning Commission, CCAC, and Public Safety Commission. Planning Commission, CCAC, and Public Safety Commissions are all scheduled for December. We will then go dark in December for the last meeting of December and the first meeting in January and return mid-January, the third Tuesday of January.
Mr. Mayor, for the holiday schedule, the next council meeting, is staff going to let us know what the city holiday schedule is? Are they taking two days or three days off this Christmas?
Okay, I'm sure you can discuss that with the city manager.
Thank you.
All right. With that said, we'll adjourn the meeting.